Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is November 2, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Veterans Day will be observed on Friday, November 11. Before we start today's meeting, we would like to take a moment to recognize the men and women who have served our nation. On Veterans Day, we honor our heroes. We remember their courage, their dedication, and their undying achievements. We express profound gratitude for those who served our country. We are privileged to know that they unselfishly placed their lives on the line to fight for our freedoms and our protection in our country. We want to say thank you for their sacrifices. Please stand for a moment of silence for those who have given their lives to our country. Thank you. Please be seated, and we will play a video presentation to honor the men and women on Veterans Day.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And to bear true faith.
And to bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And I will obey.
And I will obey.
The orders of.
The orders of.
The President of the United States.
The President of the United States.
And the orders of.
And the orders of.
Those officers.
Those officers.
Appointed over me.
Appointed over me.
According to regulations.
According to regulations.
And uniform code of military justice.
And uniform code of military justice.
So help me God.
We celebrate Veterans Day on the anniversary of the armistice that ended World War I, the armistice that began on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. The timing of this holiday is quite deliberate in terms of historical fact. But somehow, it always seems quite fitting to me that this day comes deep in autumn when the colors are muted and the day seem to invite contemplation. It is, in a way, an odd thing to honor those who died in defense of our country, in defense of us, in wars far away. The imagination plays a trick. We see these soldiers in our mind as old and wise, but most of them were boys when they died, and they gave up two lives, the one they were living and the one they would have lived. When they died, they gave up their chance to be husbands and fathers and grandfathers. They gave up their chance to be revered old men. They gave up everything for our country, for us, and all we can do is remember. I will not fail thee nor forsake thee. In memory of those who gave the last full measure of devotion, may our efforts to achieve lasting peace gain strength. Let us make a vow to our dead. Let us show them by our actions that we understand what they died for, strengthened by their courage, hardened by their value, and born with their memory. Let us continue to stand for the ideals for which they lived and died.
In the long history of the world, only a few generations have been granted the role of defending freedom in its hour of maximum danger. I do not shrink from this responsibility. I welcome it. I do not believe that any of us would exchange places with any other people or any other generation. The energy, the faith, the devotion which we bring to this endeavor will light our country and all who serve it. We shall pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship, support any friend, oppose any foe, to assure the survival and the success of liberty.
At this time, we would like to also honor our city employees who have served in various branches of the military. I also direct your attention back to the video screen that will show the employees Thank you for your service. I'd like to also give a heartfelt thanks for those who have fought and those who are still fighting. As we know, many individuals have made sacrifices, and they left their families to fight for our civil liberties that we experience each and every day. So we must thank them for that service. And also for those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. We must thank them and thank their families as well. We may only think of this day once a year, but they wake up every day and they experience that loss for that sacrifice that they made for our country. So I want to thank them, and I ask not only our community but our country to pray for them, to give them strength to get through each and every one of those days. If you're a veteran that is here with us today, have served our country, would you please stand so we could recognize you for your noble service to our country? Thank you. If you're able to, I asked everyone to please stand and sing for the singing of the National Anthem that will be performed by Bailey MacArthur, who's a junior at Oasis High School. Thank you, Bailey.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? Was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight. O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home
Thank you, Bailey. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Cosdine has asked to be excused, and I will mark her so. Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or do I have the motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a special meeting of October 19, 2022?
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting, motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We'll be utilizing the podium to my left.
Good afternoon. Tom Shadrack, permanent resident. Thank you for the reminder that we live in the greatest country on earth. That's great. Thank you. A couple things. I've had a couple calls for residents today, and I went out and looked at some issues. The construction and debris site at Chiquita and Gleason, that is a mess. To put that right into the middle of a neighborhood is not right. These people could end up with some real serious health problems. I looked out the front door of someone's house right across the street, two stories high of construction debris. And you know what that could smell like and what kind of issues that can bring and why that site was chosen. I'm speaking on behalf of those citizens. Why put that right in their front door? My issue there is why aren't we taking all that to like Festival Park location where it's in the middle of basically nowhere right now? And that would be a great place to put something like that, not in the middle of a neighborhood that's affecting hundreds of homes in that area and people. You're just creating another liability for the city. Number two was some, I just talked to Vince today, and he mentioned that they're taking care of it at Santa Barbara and Northwest 22nd Street. A company, roofing company, has set up shop in a residential zoned lot with trailers and mobile homes that they're living in while they're trying to go out and repair roofs. They don't, they're not from our city, and they're parked there in a residential area, and the neighbors are complaining. But I think Vince has got an answer that says it's not approved. But now, the issue will be, how do you get rid of it? What's the process for that? And I did notice that the interactive map for the waste, this is my comments now, is still not kind of updating with any detail like we were kind of promised. And I would like to know the status of the yacht club. I know there's a hurricane update today. You know, it's interesting that Fort Myers Beach is already out there cleaning out their sand. Sanibel, which is completely decimated, they already have an engineering team getting back their lighthouse back up, their iconic structure, working on that. And our iconic area, the yacht club, haven't heard anything on the news or in the council about the status. I'm sure the boathouse wants to get open as soon as they can, and I think everybody would love to see that. All right, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor Lou Navara, long-term resident, Cape Coral. Hope you like my new look. The only person was Melissa Giovinelli at the school board last night, but whatever. You're supposed to laugh. You guys are too serious, like the superintendent last night. Okay, I wanted to thank you for the tribute to the veterans. I actually have a collage I was trying to get. I didn't know you were going to have this tribute, but I didn't want to steal your thunder, but I can bring it back if you want to see it. I did it myself, and it's to honor the veterans because people don't realize what these men and women go through, and I recommend you go to the Cape Coral Clinic once and just stand in the parking lot, and you'll see. And that's what my collage is about. We live in a republic, not a democracy. We elect you to do our will, but it seems like once everybody gets in, you know, they kind of decide what they want to do. Keep that in mind. I learned it the hard way at student government at USF a long time ago. Let's talk about my friends LCEC. I got a couple photos. They're going to have to improve their maintenance, or we're not going to survive another hurricane. If you went down to Matley Shea after Irma, sorry, thank you, if you went down there, those poles were leaning after Irma. I didn't want to go down there to see what happened because I don't want to get in the way of the recovery. But if they didn't get knocked down, and I'm going to make a wager, if you're all sporting men and women here, gentleman's bet, my street, I'll bring you the photo next time, the pole is listing, first it was like two degrees, after Irma, three, now it's listing six. I'll bet you they never replace it. We on? We got sporting people here? All right. I'm going to bring you the picture. There's no excuse. You need to get after them. And it looked like Sprint was trying to reclaim all the wires they've neglected for several years since everybody went to cell phones and didn't want their landlines. Mayor, what are we doing about the 550 kilowatt and my recommendation for 110 kilowatt to help the people? This is a disaster. No one's going to take my recommendation. I'd like to hear an answer. That's why this is a republic and not a democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navara. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I would like to respond to the first speaker about the trash site in my district. And I'll have, I asked for the city manager to explain how we pick locations. But what I'd like to say first is, nobody planned to have five feet of water in their house. Nobody planned for a tree to fall on their automobile. Nobody planned for, you know, a loved one or a friend to die. Nobody planned for their house to burn down. Nobody planned for the majority of our city to lose electricity. And nobody planned to put a dump in District Two in that neighborhood. These are all things that we have to deal with to overcome what happened to our city. And we're all going to suffer. Every person in the city is going to suffer some way. If it was they lost their roof, they lost a loved one, their house burnt down, their cars got crushed, they had a flood, or they have a dump in their neighborhood temporarily. It's just, we're all going to suffer to some level till we get things in order. And before I ask the city manager to have someone comment on how these locations were picked, I want to say that, you know, I've met many adjusters and people coming to our city for different reasons of recovery, and many of them have told me they can't believe the cleanup efforts in our city on how fast we've overcome and got to where we are today. These are people that travel all over the country and go to disasters all over the country. They said they never seen an area that has cleaned up and has got things going as fast and rapidly as we got things done. So that's all I'd like to say. So if the city manager can explain how we pick these locations, and we don't plan on destroying people's lives, you know, so if you can do that, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shepherd. I'll take a quick stab at it from the 30,000-foot level. So we are required, as part of our debris management plan, that we submit to the state to identify locations well in advance of any disaster that could serve as a disaster debris staging area. Those sites are submitted to the state, they are reviewed, they are permitted and approved by the state. So we don't have the ability to arbitrarily set up debris management sites anywhere throughout the city unless they are part of the debris management plan and approved by the state. Now, as you know, in areas of the city south of Pine Island Road, we are essentially approaching buildout, and there are very few large tracts of land left, and those that are left are in public ownership. And so we happen to own the land that can accommodate this type of operation. So these decisions are not made arbitrarily by any one person in the city. They're not made to punish any particular neighborhood, but rather, they are made strategically as we identify areas throughout the city that can serve as temporary drop-off sites to collect the debris that is generated within that specific geographic area. It serves as a halfway point between the neighborhood in which the trash generated and ultimately the final disposition site for that trash. So I think a suggestion was made that we haul all the trash from, let's say, the southern part of the city all the way to Festival Park. Well, if you're doing that, you might as well just continue to go up into Charlotte County where ultimately a lot of this CND debris is going to. That's inefficient. As I said before, these are designed to be temporary staging areas where the neighborhood collectors go, they drop off, and then larger trucks will come in eventually and haul off the construction debris. So I understand they are a massive inconvenience to neighborhoods. We totally understand that. We can't avoid it any more than we could have avoided Hurricane Ian. And so, as we have mentioned previously, and we continue to reiterate to all of our neighbors here in the city, this is a major natural disaster that has hit our region and has hit the city, and it is going to be quite some time before life resumes a certain sense of normalcy that we had before the storm. All of us are going to be inconvenienced at work, in our neighborhoods, and as we commute from point A to point B. So again, I just want to stress, Councilmember, and direct comment to the speaker, we understand the frustration. We get it. We don't like it any more than they do. We just don't have any other alternatives. And so the intent is that this will be temporary. How long temporary is, I don't know. Hopefully, not more than six months. But they're designed to be temporary staging areas, and then once we complete our debris pickup and start closing down those sites, we will restore those sites back to the condition they were in prior to the hurricane. I hope I addressed your question, Councilmember.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. City Manager, because that was well more spoken than I could have saying that we're staging the trash and then moving it to the next location, and we only have so many places to do that. So my other response was to the LCEC request from Mr. Navara. And a little update on that is, when I went to the LCEC Board of Directors, I presented them with potentially looking at how they have our residential electric rates in three tiers. You have a tier one for your first 500 kilowatts, you have a tier two for your second, and then once you hit tier three, you pay X amount. So when I was talking to the board, because we had all increased or had succumbed to those increases, I asked them to maybe look at maybe increasing the kilowatt hours in tier one or two, or maybe going to what they do for commercial and doing a single-tier kilowatt so that we could prepare or at least plan for what we use as a consumer. If we know we only use 1,500 kilowatts, maybe that's tier one. So when I proposed that to the board, I did get a response back from the CEO, and we sat in my office and we talked, and she explained a few things to me, and she said that they will look into it. And as far as LCEC goes, I feel that is the best response I could have gotten from them because, as we all know, we pick the Board of Directors, we vote on them, we are a co-op, and we are all owners. So I will continue to work with them on how they did this increase, and hopefully, the prices go down for us soon enough. But until then, I urge everyone to just keep an eye on their Board of Directors and attend their meetings like I did. So with that, I want to say thank you, Mayor, and...
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, as far as the, you know, the temporary drop-off sites for the debris throughout the city, you know, like all of us, we wish we could snap our fingers and it'd be gone. But unfortunately, with almost a category five hurricane, you know, that left us with about eight years of debris on the ground, this is going to take some time. And that's why we have the various sites. I mean, I was here for Irma. A lot of the sites that we're utilizing today, we utilized then. We understand that it's an inconvenience for residents. Unfortunately, that's what we are going to have to utilize in order to get this process actually quicker because if those haulers had to take the, you know, the debris all the way to Charlotte County or Lee County landfills, that's going to be three to four times longer. So that means three to four times longer to get the debris picked up throughout the city. So we understand it's an inconvenience. We apologize for that, but it's just something that we're going to have to do to get through this. I know that our goal is to get the debris picked up as soon as possible. I know that our goal was to get the debris picked up as soon as possible. You know, I, I was looking yesterday at the statistics, where we are with our debris, and I know we'll get an update on that later. But that eight years of debris that was on the ground, as of yesterday, we had almost 200 trucks out in the city picking up debris throughout. I can tell you, being here for Irma, I can, without a doubt, tell you, we are light years ahead where we are now compared to Hurricane Irma. Hurricane Irma in 2017, we didn't even have a contractor in place because they all left about 30 days after the hurricane. And that's about where we're at now. So, at, to date, we've picked up about 956, this was yesterday, about 956 cubic yards of waste throughout the city. We have picked up almost 20,000 loads throughout the city. In Irma, we were just getting started. So, there's a huge difference between Irma and Ian. As we all know, the storm's about four to five times the intensity, so it is going to take some time. We just ask for your patience. We'll get through it like we have before. And like the city manager said, we will make sure that we put those areas that we utilize for temporary drop-off sites back to the conditions that they were pre-Hurricane Ian. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 9A, which is the consent agenda. I will now open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion. Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, I'd like to pull item 13, I believe.
Item 13, which is an addendum, Resolution 248-22?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items that want to be pulled by council? If not, do I have a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So, move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 13 is addendum Resolution 248-22. Councilmember Welsh, since you pulled item, you have the floor.
Yes, I noticed this was an added-on item, and I was hoping the city manager had some information on potentially the amount of the lien we're going to be releasing for this property and the reasons why we're to do so.
Yes, Councilmember, I'm actually very happy to talk about this particular item because I believe this item is actually a success story undertaken by current and previous staffs assigned to the Office of Economic and Business Development. So, to answer your first question, the total amount of liens that are outstanding on this property as of today, and I just want to make a note that the property is now in compliance as of today, is $273,000. The reason we are here today is because our economic and business development staff recognized early on that we had a problem with the property owner at the time and the unpermitted uses that were occurring on that site. We were pursuing various code enforcement cases through the process, which eventually led to these liens being established. But more importantly, we ended up working with the property owner to essentially get that individual to understand that perhaps it was in the city's best interests and, and his best interest if we were to somehow broker a, a deal with an investor who could come in and redevelop the property for more productive uses than was, was currently at, at play at the time. And so, this has been a very long process. This probably started right around the time when I started, so almost two years ago. It was very detailed, stop and go along the way, and then eventually, we got to the point where the only thing that had to be resolved was this outstanding lien. The existing property owner was, was not going to pay the lien. The incoming property owner was concerned about paying the lien. We were very concerned about the deal falling through. We did not want to penalize the new property owner that we helped recruit and, and, and bring the parties together. And so, with that, in order to break the logjam, I made a, a, a recommendation that I would recommend to the magistrate at the time, but we since found out that it wasn't in the magistrate's authority, it was in city council's authority, that as an economic development incentive, and in order to move forward with resolving the code cases that existed on the property, that I would recommend that the liens be abated by city council only if the property were to go to closing. So, I believe that the closing is scheduled for November 15th, and this should not hold up the closing the way the doc, the documents are written. If it closes, the new property owner would not be responsible to pay those liens. If the property does not close, the, the liens will remain on the property. We will, we still have all legal avenues available to us to include foreclosing on the property if council directs us to do that. However, I'm hopeful that we have brokered a deal here that would end up in a very decent mixed-use development being built there to replace an unpermitted storage yard. Did I answer your questions, Councilmember?
You did. My only concern is that this lien is on the property, and if we foreclose on the property, the property becomes ours. And then, we can pursue what we want with, if we want, want that to happen. So, this is, I feel, is only going to give other people who might have properties located on Pine Island Road, the idea to follow in the footsteps of what this previous owner did. And I know there aren't any more out there currently doing this. My only question is, for the sake of time, I know we can close on the 15th, we can get things started, but was there any offer of, let's say, a, a TIF or anything like that with the economic development where the developer would pay the $273,000 to the city, but in, let's say, five years that they complete the development, the project is a success, and we give them some sort of tax relief on the project? Because as, as I've lived here my whole life, I've seen a lot of things sound too good to be true, and they don't end up happening. And 10 years later, 20 years later, they find, finally happen. So, I'm just afraid to maybe put the cart before the horse here on this project by, by eliminating a quarter million dollars that's owed to the city for development.
So, Councilmember, ultimately, we are after two things here. Number one, compliance. Number two, redevelopment of underutilized properties. And I think we can check off those two boxes. Now, in terms of your question about whether we offer the new developer, the new property owner incentives through our Cape Competes program, we did not, because it, that, the project as proposed did not meet the thresholds that are under our Cape Competes program. While it is going to be mixed-use, meaning there'd be mixed uses on the site, it's not a truly integrated mixed-use project, because there's market rate residential that's going to be built there, our program does not incentivize residential developments unless they are part of a true mixed-use project. The commercial that's also going in there is also the type of commercial that we do not incentivize under Cape Competes. So, that is why we did not offer those types of incentives to the developer, but instead, offered this as an alternative.
Okay. My last question is, when speaking with the developer, knowing that this $273,000 that's owed to the city will be forgiven, was there any negotiations? Because it seems to me like if a developer's going to come in and put in some sort of multifamily or mixed use, there's obviously some profit involved for them. So, is this a make or break deal? Or is there room for us to maybe ask them to meet us halfway and show the city in good faith that they could pay 140, whatever the halfway point is? Was there any discussions on that end?
So, actually, Councilmember, there were discussions on that. In fact, probably about 45 days ago, this deal was on life support. We were asked about city investment or participation by way of incentives. Again, my answer at that time was that that is something that I could not recommend under Cape Competes. But in order to salvage the, the proposed arrangement, I personally got involved, and I personally offered to recommend the abatement of code enforcement liens for the new property owner.
Okay. So, I would really love to hear some thoughts and comments from my fellow, fellow council members on this because, at this point, eliminating such a high amount of lien, I'm not sure I could support it the way it's written. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have two questions. I think both are going to be addressed by the city attorney. I wanted to ask first for, if the city attorney could reclarify the foreclosure process that was described by Councilmember Welsh. As far as I understand it, if we foreclose, it doesn't necessarily entitle us to the fact that we own the property. Can you clarify how that works, please?
There, yeah, there are, if other, you know, mortgages are on there and so on and so forth, that are going to be encumbris, encumbering the property, there is a possibility that we would have to pay some other mortgage that is on there. We would not get it free and clear. We could try to get it free and clear, it all depends. I mean, I, I haven't looked at that for years.
Right.
Okay? And it's going to cost money to do that. It isn't something that just happens automatically. And it will take six months at the earliest.
A year.
Probably, you know, over a year normally.
Correct. And the value of the lien, in this case, I think it's unquestioned that it would be less than the value of the property. So, there's always the opportunity at a foreclosure sale that someone would come and pay.
Current payoff.
Market price.
Yep.
Which would again, leave us without the property.
Correct.
And then, the second one was, to, to hit off of his point, do we have the authority here to maybe provide a further contingency in what's being presented here, that we condition the release on an understanding that, for example, the commercial component of this proposed project be completed at the same time or sooner than the mixed-use component, for an example?
Hmm, I'm...
The reason I ask is because a lot of times, we get these developments that come forth, and they promise this and that. And what happens is, you get, in this case, let's say, they decide, so it's more fruitful for them that they create the multifamily portion first, and then, and then phase that, phase out, for example, and then the out parcel is, for example, not completed for some time after that.
The reason why I'm hesitant to say that, because I was not involved in any of the negotiations. So, I don't know.
Sure.
Exactly what the, I don't know whether, whether the city manager can talk about that, or Mr. Nocleario, who was also involved in the negotiations. Can it be done? Yes. Will it kill the deal? I don't know.
No, I understand that portion. I just didn't know if we even had the authority to entertain those discussions. So, thank you for that.
So, my only response back to you, Councilmember, and you're absolutely, absolutely right. We, you know, we are assuming that this transaction is going to move forward. The developer has expended a considerable amount of time and money in going through the necessary due diligence in order to obtain the various approvals that they needed to do prior to the closing. But something could always happen and the deal will fall apart. I can tell you that the developer disclosed with me, but I am not at liberty to disclose who is going into the commercial portion of the property. But my understanding is that they were, there was a letter, certainly an LOI signed between the two and possibly even a, a lease or a development agreement. Now, whether that moves forward or not, I, 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 I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I weigh in. One of the things that makes me a little concerned is, we are basing pretty much all of this on the sale of the property and becoming compliant. Well, I can tell you, I rode by the lot yesterday, it is compliant. There's, those trailers are all gone. The site is completely cleared. My concern is, we give the developer, and actually, the, the current property owner, we, we tell them at the time of sale that we are going to do the lien release. What happens if the project doesn't move forward? What happens if 30 days from now, the, the new property owner says, "I'm going to put it up for sale," and they're going to sell the property? So, then, we've given the $273,000 away, and we got absolutely nothing for it but a clean lot. So, I would have preferred to see some type of language in there, maybe when a certain portion of the project was completed, where a certificate of occup, occupancy was issued, then we have something to show for the $273,000. On November 16th, this $273,000 lien's going to go away, and other than a clean lot, that's all we got. That's the only assurance that we have. I would have preferred to see some types of insurances listed in the agreement where, and based it on a certificate of occupancy. At least, we know we've got something. And also, like you had mentioned, Councilmember Welsh, what's going to cause anybody else from doing this? You know, we put a pretty substantial lien on this particular individual because he wasn't compliant. He refused to be compliant. That's why he had $1,000 a day, I believe it was, a, a fine against him. That's how we've gotten to the $273,000. I just want to make sure that we're going to get something in return but a vacant lot, and it costs us $273,000. That's my only concern. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I don't want to repeat what's already said, but I agree with everything that was said. I don't like how easy we, we folded there. And I'm not saying, you know, we don't know all the facts either, so I would like to know a lot more before going forward with this.
Mr. City Manager, you had the discussion, you were privy to the, to the discussion.
Yes.
And I, I think we all have the same goal with the end, where we want to be. Do you think that we could continue this, where you have the opportunity to reach out to the prospective buyer, to see if we could put something in there that's a little more definitive as far as a portion of the project is completed? Anything of that sort? Because like I said, I think my concern is, you know, a week after we do this, he could turn around and sell it. And we're kind of caught holding an empty bag.
So, I can't speak on behalf of the developer. In fact, that's why I stood up to see if their representative was here in the audience today, because my understanding was that they were going to be here. The only thing that I can tell you is that I can under, that I understand that when financing sources are in play, they typically will not move forward with the deal when there are liens on the property. So, they needed to ensure that the property was available, the title to the property was available free, free and clear before moving forward with the closing. It is my sense, but again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the developer, that if we do not approve something similar to this that allows the property to close on November 15th, then the deal, the transaction will essentially, essentially expire. And what we'll end up with is a, with a piece of property with $273,000 worth of liens on it, that most likely, we will never collect upon that money. The reality is with code enforcement liens, I think you all know this, that, you know, the, the rate of recovery for those liens are very, very small. And so, if we don't, if this transaction does not close, then we could find ourselves back in the same situation where with the existing property owner, who, trying to be delicate about this, who has chosen not to comply, will simply reopen the unauthorized storage lot that they had there. And unless, and until we foreclose, you know, the, the city's hands are somewhat handcuffed during, throughout the entire code enforcement. during, throughout the entire code enforcement process.
And what's your confidence level on this project moving forward?
I can tell you that this is a developer that has done work in the city before. They have delivered. They deliver quality development. I'm confident that this project will move forward.
Okay.
Again, no guarantees, and I can't speak on their behalf.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I would really like to know what the development is. I'm not really thrilled to death with investing in, the city investing in another apartment complex and adding more traffic to our city.
So it is, and we have previously disclosed the project to you as part of our economic development quarterly reports. I believe the title of the project is The Springs? The Springs? And it is a multifamily rental project, for the most part, on the back part of the project property off of Pine Island Road. And then I believe the first 250 feet is reserved for commercial purposes. And as I said before, there is a tenant lined up to build on that site.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to influence people to build apartment complexes. There's many other properties zoned for that that we're not going to be able to comment on it. We have to let them build apartment complexes. But in a situation where we're giving up money, to me, that would be for commercial needs that we need really bad. That would be something that I'd be want to bend and give up money for something that the city needs.
If I may just respectfully clarify, you're giving up money that you don't have and you're likely never to get.
Councilmember Tate?
I was going to let...
My understanding is that we do have a representative from the developer here in the audience. If Paulette would like to come to the podium and speak on behalf of her client.
And that's just what I was going to say, is that I knew she was here. And I do know who the tenant is just because it's been out on the street for quite a while. So see what Paulette has to say.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was a little late. I didn't know where we landed on the schedule. Steve Wagner from Continental Companies could not be here today. And so I'd like to fill you in a little bit on the project. And this is something we've been working on for almost a year. It was very difficult because of the situation with all of the trailers and the violations. And we have been working with Ron Neff, the owner, trying to move things forward. As of today, that site is empty. Yay. We do have potential restaurant that we've all been looking forward to going on the front of the frontage. We also have a Springs multifamily project. I want to say it's 309 units going on the backside. And speaking to the multifamily issue, last year, we only had 700 units of multifamily come online. If you look at what we have nationwide, we are so far below what we should, where we should be to bring the housing that we need for the population that we have. I don't know if you saw the news today, but we had another 0.75% rate increase from the federal government. A lot of our multifamily projects that were going are probably going to halt. The reason this one is going forward is because they locked their loan in and they need to get this done by the middle of November. If they lose the loan, the chances of this project going forward are slim and none. When you take interest rates, construction costs, cap rates, I mean, it's just, it's a big bubble we're in right now. And, you know, a lot of these projects that we're seeing, I hope they all go forward, but I think there's going to be a pause for some time here. Now, we just had a hurricane. We've got a lot of homeless people. We've got a lot of displaced people. Granted, this isn't going to be an instant fix, but we definitely are going to need the housing to bring workers in and to allow businesses to grow. Any questions?
Do you have an anticipated start date when they'll start?
Middle of November. They'll start right in.
So you still have to apply for the permits?
We have, we just received our site plan permits.
Okay.
So that is ready.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we need a motion for Resolution 248-22.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 9B appointments and boards. We do not have any listed, so we'll go over to 9C unfinished business. Follow-up items for council. There's none listed. Does council have any follow-up items? C and none, we'll move on to 9D new business. We do not have any new business listed. 9E is personnel actions, none listed as well. Petitions to council, we do not have any listed either. 9G is follow-up items for city management. G1 Hurricane Ian recovery update. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This next item is just going to update you on our progress to recover from Hurricane Ian. I'm going to have Chief Lamb come up to the podium and he'll be joined by a variety of city staff members who will go over their particular subject matters. So I'll turn it over to Chief Lamb.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director. We're going to be somewhat brief tonight, but I want to start the conversation with debris. And we'll turn it over to Michael Elscher, Public Works Director.
Or Terry?
Terry. Terry, Solid Waste Manager.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Terry Schweitzer, Solid Waste Manager. Just a brief update on debris, well, as brief as I can because there's a lot of moving parts, as you all know, right now. So the right-of-way progress for ground clearance, leaner and hanger program is basically completed. They removed 749 trees, 6,549 hanger trees. All zones have been completed, other than spot work in the parks and the golf course. If a resident does have something that they have a question about as far as a dangerous tree in the right-of-way, they could submit that to 311 and a spot crew will go out to handle it. As of probably ten minutes ago or so, the debris removal crew has hit the 1 million cubic yard mark. So we've removed 1 million cubic yards of debris as of today. They're removing about 41,500 cubic yards daily. Over the last seven days, they've averaged 42,000. So they are moving that up. Of that, 850,000 is vegetative, 175,000 is C and D. There's 21 subzones that the first pass of vegetation has been completed with C and D collection ongoing. 14 subzones with both vegetation and C and D ongoing at the same time. 11 subzones are veg-only at this time, and then we'll go to C and D. They're using 185-plus trucks a day. That requires about 200 debris monitors to monitor all of this work. There's over 500 people on the debris removal process right now that are assisting with this. 11 of the 28 gated communities have submitted right-of-entry and for PPDR, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Our main issue right now in some areas is working through low wires. Is some of the services have been restored, especially under the internet cable. Some of the wires are low, requiring the larger trucks that can move high volume. They can't get down the street, resulting in some confusion among residents why they stopped in the middle of the street. That is part of the reason. And the contractors working with the subs that have the smaller trucks to get down those streets have low wires. And we're also working with telecommunications to see about getting some of those wires raised where we see them. There's five debris sites operating currently. They all have security and private fencing at all five sites. And the haulout of the debris will start this week. It will go to either SLD up on Zimmel Road or to Burnt Store Recycling, which will take the compost. The canals, we finally have received the state approval and the Corps of Engineer permit. They're all in place. We've given Series the notice to proceed and we expect that to start Monday, canal cleanup. There will be some basic operational plans. We're going to review those with Series and Tetra Tech on Friday and then we'll get the information out to the public so that they know what to expect. We're going to use a similar type process or map that we've been using for the right-of-ways that'll follow the canal progress as well, so people will be able to follow that progress. As far as the regular solid waste services of Waste Pro, as we know, they've been doing garbage and recycling and containerized horticultures to resume Monday, 11:14. That will be personal cans and yard waste bags. No plastic bags or black bags or other colors, and it must be separated from storm debris so that they are aware. This was a result of a meeting that I had with the county Solid Waste Division and Waste Pro today to determine the best course of action to get this started amongst the debris removal, consideration of the bridge that's out right now that would add additional travel time and not being able to complete routes. So we understand people's need to get this picked up and we're doing it as quickly as possible so we can get that started. Bulk service has not been yet determined when that will start, regular bulk service. So that will be forthcoming. We're continuing to be in discussions with the county and Waste Pro and of course, Series as far as we get the passes of debris picked up. So a little bit on the commercial property debris removal and private property debris removal. So there's been some questions on whether we were, you know, FEMA was going to allow the city to do it or if the state was going to do it. So what has happened recently? The state has finally set up a mission to conduct debris removal with a contractor. We had a meeting with the state today, discussed this process, and we determined it would be in the best interest of the city to sign on for the state to use their contractor to pick up personal property and commercial properties. It does eliminate the risk for the city, the private properties, and also the commercial properties. They are, the state's working with, they're meeting with their contractor on Friday to work out all the details. They're waiting for the final missions to come in from around the state and in the affected communities. And once we have the details, we'll be providing more of those details as well. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Outstanding job and I appreciate you answering calls. And I know it says 72 hours and you called me right back, so I really appreciate that. And to the residents, you're just, I think the city is just doing an amazing job. So I wanted to clarify the yard waste because you went over that really quickly. So the way I understand it, if you have normal horticulture, and not your hurricane debris, but normal horticulture, it has to be in a can, not in a black bag. Is that, for residential, is that correct?
That is correct. In a residential garbage can or the craft paper bags.
Or craft paper bags. I want to make sure everybody understands that. And can we do something? Where's our media team? Can we do something to make sure people understand that in bullet point? You know, this is how you have to do it. Make it simple and clear. Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. No black bags?
Correct.
Okay. And commercial, you and I had a conversation about this yesterday and I spoke with Rob today about it. And I understand that the state's now going to come in, so that's great. Can we get that word out to the industrial park and this commercial is condo too, correct?
That is correct.
So can we either hand-deliver or walk the streets or knock on the doors and get this whole area to understand that help is on the way, but we don't know exactly what day it's coming?
So councilmember, if I may answer, so based on the meeting that we had late this morning, I think the answer to that question is yes, but not right now. So they made it clear to us that there's still a lot of moving parts to what the state had proposed and we're likely not going to get a lot of answers to our questions until at least Friday at the earliest. So following our discussions with the state on Friday, I think we'll be in a better position to communicate to our larger apartment complexes, condominium complexes and commercial properties exactly what is going to transpire. There's been a lot of discussion on this point that dates back probably to the middle part of last week to include all throughout the weekend. The mayor was personally involved. Mike June Lombardo was perfectly, was personally involved. This has been a moving target over the last week and a half and I think we finally got more concrete answers today from the state than we were able to get during the last week. But I think Terry alluded that there was going to be a significant financial exposure to the city related to these types of debris piles. We had basically, since the very beginning of the hurricane, put in our mission approval requests directly to FEMA so we can start the process of removing trash from commercial properties or trash in the right-of-way that emanated from commercial properties. And as of this date, we hadn't received approval of our mission request for that and also private property debris removal. And then today, we found out that FEMA did not include the city in a specific category of debris impact, which means that it was likely that our mission was not going to be approved. That was the conclusion that our team came to. And for that reason, we decided that it was in the city's best interest to partner with the state and just have them absorb that responsibility. I think that the state is willing to take the financial risk that if FEMA does not approve it on a statewide basis, that they are going to fund it. So that's why for commercial and private property, that is now being transitioned over to the state rather than the city handling that.
I appreciate the update and I really appreciate the mayor. I know he worked all weekend on this. And people don't see that in the public, but he is out there working so hard. And I want to make sure, Terry, just yesterday, we had this conversation and we talked to a landowner and we told him one thing. So now that's why I'm asking, can, I know it's not, we're not going to have the information until Friday, but I was just going to send him a note and say, "Help is on the way." Keep, I don't want them to go out and hire contractors and spend the money if by Friday or Monday, we're going to have answers for them. So that's what I'm saying. If there is a way that we have an email list or the business directory or something that we can get them informed and tell them that we have a plan, we just need to get it further clarified. So if you can do that, that would be terrific.
I will work on that and see what I can do. And I did want to clarify on the horticulture start date. That is Monday, November 14th.
Well, that's very important. So we have another week yet before Waste Pro starts to pick up horticulture.
Yes, Monday, November 14th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hayden?
Thanks for the report. I think you had mentioned the bridge being closed. Close Hatchet is back open now, so hopefully that'll relieve any...
That's great.
...problems we might be having. So their seven days went down to one day, so we were glad to see that. I had a lady approach me, actually twice last Friday, from a group called Southern Disaster Recovery. And she had said they had gotten a state contract for debris removal. Are those the folks that we're going to be working with?
From our understanding on the call, they will be the, I guess, we'll call it the general contractor over the entire project. That's what they had told us. I haven't seen anything in writing, but councilmember, that's what I understand to be.
What was the name again?
It's called Southern Disaster Recovery, SDR. And she made it sound like they were ready, ready to go to work, ready to go work now. And you said, when she talked about the state contract, so is the state paying for this? Are we being reimbursed through the state? Or how does this, how would this contract work?
That's a good question. The state is actually handling all of it, the financial aspect and the collection as well. So, yeah.
So these homes that councilmember Tate talked about last week that had debris from the road all the way up to whatever may have been left of their house, that will kind of be the piece that they'll be able to remove because the debris isn't in the right-of-way?
It'll be right-of-way. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. It'll be, councilmember, it's in the right-of-way. So there'll be a very similar process to PPDR. They'll have to file a right-of-entry and go through that entire process, but the state is handling that entire process.
Reason I ask that because she made it sound like they would be cleaning up more than just what was in the right-of-way.
But I think we need to clarify. So there was some discussion about properties that have significant structural issues and basically, they need to be torn down. And in those... And in those types of situations, my understanding, based on the conversations we've had with the state, they will go to those properties, and they will handle the debris removal from those properties, and they will also, the state is also handling the removal of all titled or registered vessels, meaning jet skis, boats, cars, that end up where they're not supposed to be. In terms of debris removal from our regular neighborhoods that are not in gated communities like a Sandoval, that's still the city's responsibility, but the state is going to handle those subdivisions like the Lermontage, Sandovals, those types of developments.
Okay. I just wanted to get a clarification on that because I thought that was important, that it wasn't just that one area. So, thanks, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I had a meeting last night with Commissioner Wayne, and we had a discussion on this topic. And, you know, the state mission, state mission was approved for Lee County, and we were incorporated into that mission. Some of the missions, the unincorporated area only was applied, but in this particular mission for the commercial debris was for all of Lee County. And it's my understanding, speaking with him, that typically, the county, what they do, since a debris remove contractor has been identified, they just have to provide the location, and apparently, they have to provide some type of documentation is for a, an agreement by the commercial property owner that, like a whole, hold harmless agreement. And then they will schedule to go out and pick up the debris only in the right-aways. So, sounds like we got some more clarity on that today, so I was glad that I could get that information over. I've been working with Mike G. Lombardo, I probably talked to him four times today to get the state to approve the mission that we had put in for, I believe, on October 12th, if I recall the date to be correct. So, we've been working on this for almost three weeks now, but it sounds like this is probably going to be the best direction to go because it's already in place. There is absolutely no financial burden on the city. The state's going to work with FEMA to get reimbursed. If not, the state's going to pay for the removal. So, we just got to get the details, I think, worked out, how we're going to move it forward. Sounds like we'll have that here soon. So, thanks to staff for getting that worked out today. Councilmember Walsh, I'm sorry, councilmember Shepherd's next.
First of all, thank you for the job you're doing and the people that you're working with. I think they're all doing a fantastic job. I just had a couple of questions for citizens watching. You heard earlier, people are concerned in District 2 with that temporary dump site, and there's other sites in the city as well. I want the citizens to know as well that these people are working seven days a week. This is a seven-day-a-week operation. They're not taking Sunday off, they're not taking Saturday off. But the other questions I have were concerns, people are worried about dust, you know, from it being that work site, they're worried about the dust, you know, landing on their cars and on their property. Maybe you can explain what we're going to do to control that. They're worried about safety with the trucks coming in and out. So, if you can just touch base a little bit and explain to people what has been implemented to handle dust when the dry season does hit and the safety issues, just so they feel a little comfort level that they know you're on top of it.
So, councilmember, at each of our sites, we have installed dust suppression systems that use water to, we frequently spray water on the mound and on the ground to keep dust at bay. There's always going to be dust, and so, you know, we'll look at the possibility of, once these sites shut down, the possibility of going in into the neighborhood and helping the neighborhood clean up and remove the dust. But, the point is that we are very active in addressing the dust in all of our sites. That's one of the requirements for permitting approval. In terms of safety, you know, our Public Works crews have gone into some of these neighborhoods where these sites are located and made sure that the culverts are properly graded, that there are no significant safety concerns. But, the bottom line is, you do have these trucks on the road, and it's, there's more volume in the neighborhood. So, folks have to look out for those vehicles, and they're going to be operating there for some time.
Thank you. I just wanted them to know that we're on top of these things that they bring up and they ask frequently. Let them know that there are things implemented to take care of the dust.
We want to make sure, again, as I said before, we understand, this is a, not a use that I would want in my particular neighborhood, but given the fact that we're here as a result of a natural disaster, we want to make, you know, the situation as palatable as possible, right? And create the least amount of inconvenience and disturbance to our neighbors. And so, whether it's noise, dust, traffic, what have you, our folks in Public Works are very responsive to going out and investigating every complaint that we get.
And I knew that, and I witnessed it. I just, like I said, I wanted them to hear.
And to add to what Rob had mentioned, so, we'd also put up message boards for reduced speed, reduced speed on skyline, the high-traffic area, and then in the neighborhoods, especially around the CND site, we've also basically set up a traffic pattern for the trucks, one way in, one way out, so that they're not going on the same street and causing further lawn damage, things like that, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to hear this today, that we have partnered with the state to work on the commercial construction and debris waste, because it has been a big question out there with a lot of business owners that I've talked with, is what do I do? Do I need to hire someone? Do I not have to hire someone? And it makes me proud that our governor took the stand and said, "Yes, we are going to take care of it." Makes me sad that our other administration did not take the stand and say, "Yes, we're going to come in and make you guys whole with making everything right." So, with that being said, the only construction and debris site if I wanted to bring stuff to is still 1821 Southwest 42nd Street, or do we have two open?
Councilmember Walsh, yes, that is correct. 1821 Southwest 42nd.
Which is that site that's off beach in Chiquita?
Correct.
Okay. So, I will be passing that information along to a lot of the business owners that were wondering what's going on, where they need to put their stuff, can, does it have to be in the right-of-way? So, again, I'm glad the state stepped up and is willing to help us, and I'm glad that I can tell them that their debris that they've put out will be picked up because small businesses, the only business we really have here in Cape Coral, and it's what makes the world go around. So, there's a lot of businesses that sustained damage that wanted to reopen, and when you have a pile of trash in front of your business, it looks like you were demolished, and it turns people to maybe shifting like, "Oh, I'm just going to order everything from Amazon now because I can't go to my local mom-and-pop shop." So, hearing that that happened today makes me very proud of the city, very proud of the state, and I hope that we can keep our businesses running. So, thank you.
And for the business owners too, it's, you know, we have the CND site, and then we also have, just as a reminder to the viewers, that we have the residential yard waste site as well, up at 11, well, actually, it's 2930 Northwest 13th Street. So, we also have that, just as a reminder.
All right. Also, just on the same note, since we're talking about the recovery update, Mr. City Manager, you know, I know a lot of our catch basins throughout the city, you know, got some debris in them. Do we have a plan in place where we're going to actually do an inspection at our catch basins to see if debris needs to be removed from them? How are we going to move forward? I know that may be a little later down the road. I just want to make sure that's on our radar as well.
I actually believe Public Works has already started that initiative. Mr. Ilchizen, can you better answer the mayor's question?
Yeah, we have a series of engineering inspectors that have been going around. They started in the CRA district on the major roads. They've been pulling lids and identifying any clogged or any, you know, just silted-in areas, and they've been having the VAC trucks and the grapple trucks clean the debris from the inlets and actually suck them out. They will sweep the entire city. It will obviously take time. At some point, we'll put a word out to the residents if there's something in a local neighborhood way off a major road, but they're going to, they'll run the major roads first, then they'll do the collectors, and then we'll get to the locals. At the point when we get to the locals, because there are so many lane miles of those, we may work with communications to put a word out to the residents. If you have something in a catch basin in front of your home, put a ticket in through 311. That'll help us identify those a lot easier, working with the residents.
Right, I know we're getting ready to go in the dry season, so that's an advantage for us, but I agree, if residents out there have a problem in their neighborhood, 311, just let us know there is a problem. Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilmember Tate.
Mike, while you're there, and I don't know if this is all related, but since we've been talking about the red tide on the news a lot, do we have our bubble curtains up and running, or?
So, the bubble curtains were up. We have not put the divers in the water to see how they made out through the storm. The dive team is also part of a routine, regular Public Works crews, and they've been focusing on the upland stuff first. At some point, we are going to have to put the team back together, get them in the water and see how they fared.
Okay, and normally, we get a water update, and I know it's not necessary right now, but have you heard of any of, because they're reporting red tide, but I haven't seen it, and I haven't had any complaints or anything. I just didn't know if Maya's been tracking that.
Nothing on the red tide. We did hear about some potential blue-green stuff, but not on the red tide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to say, Terry, I appreciate everything you're doing. I know you're working hard and doing what you can, so thank you and your team.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, as you've heard, you know, we still have city staff from across all departments working on things, or we're kind of focused in three areas. City services such as debris permitting and a variety of other things that the city is doing to recover from the effects of Hurricane Ian. Another major focus for us is financial recovery, working with our Financial Services Department, Hagerty Consulting, working on expedited funds and projects that we can get those turned into FEMA, get those dollars back, and get those dollars recycled. And then lastly, working to advocate on behalf of the city. So, please do announce that the DRC, the Disaster Recovery Center run by FEMA, will be located at Lake Kennedy, at the community center there, and we hope to have it open. I don't have times yet, but we hope to have it open on Friday. They're working at the speed of federal government, but we're hoping to have that open on Friday. Additionally, tomorrow night, here at City Hall in the council chambers, doors are going to open at 5:00, and the program's going to start at 6:00. We have a town hall with representatives from FEMA. They're going to talk specifically and have subject matter experts on hand, touch on the 50% rule, temporary housing, individual assistance, flood insurance programs, business assistance, and many other topics. So, our plan for that is to have those individuals come give their presentation, and then we'll be taking questions in an organized fashion to present out to that group and get as many questions as we can answered until 8:00. And then, anything further, we'll provide methods for individuals to get those questions turned in. We are going to broadcast that over Cape TV, YouTube, and Facebook, so we anticipate a sizable turnout. Any questions that I can answer for Hurricane Recovery for the city?
Any questions?
Thank you, sir, appreciate the update. Okay, we'll move on to item...
Matt.
I guess Matt's getting ready. I thought he was coming up for Hurricane, but we'll move on to item 9G2, permitting process update.
Mr. Granbo, you can run with it.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Granbo, Special Products Coordinator in the City Manager's Office. During this evening's permitting process update, I'd like to touch on three different topics. First, an update on our emergency permitting process, followed by some information on a major push-button and simple permit restructuring initiative that the city staff members are currently conducting. And finally, I'd like to touch on our end-of-year action plan for permitting and EnerGov in general. For this evening's permitting process update, as of the close of business yesterday, we've issued 3,598 permits through the emergency paper permitting process. About 94% of those were issued here at City Hall, and about 6% were issued at the Cape Coral Art Center in South Cape. The most common permit types that we've been issuing are roofs, AC, electrical, and fence. While the emergency paper permitting process has been ongoing, city staff members here at City Hall are also processing permits that were applied for through the EnerGov CSS platform prior to Hurricane Ian, and since the opening of business on the 11th of October, they've issued 1,924 permits that had been previously submitted. So, that's a grand total of 5,422 permits issued over the past three weeks through the hybrid approach of paper permitting for emergency as well as the permits that have been previously applied for before the storm in EnerGov CSS. The paper permitting sites remain open at City Hall and in South Cape at the Art Center, and we're holding with the six days a week, 7:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. on Saturday. Also, officially, we will be opening EnerGov CSS for all new permit application submissions on Monday, November 14th, which is about one week from this upcoming Monday. So, over the last few weeks, we've been, as I discussed during my update last week, conducting a very thorough restructuring of many of our types of permits in the EnerGov system, and that includes both push-button permits, true push-button permits, as well as what we're calling the simple permits. The purpose of these restructures are really to reduce the task volume in one portion of EnerGov known as the review coordinator, and the, based on information that we've received from our consultant Plant Moran, through our friends at the City of Doral and the City of Des Moines in Iowa, as well as Tyler Technologies themselves, they believe that reducing the volume of those tasks is going to significantly improve our system performance as well as improve our overall permit turnaround time. So, that's the overall purpose and the major goal of this restructuring. So, for our push-button permits, we're going to be conducting two phases of push-button permit reconfigurations, and that'll total about 12 different types of permits. The first phase will go live when the full EnerGov CSS reactivation occurs on the 14th of this month, and that first phase will include the most common emergency permits that are being applied for. So, that's your AC changeout, emergency electrical, and your residential fence. The second phase, which will have the other eight push-button permits, is going to go live by the end of the month, the week of the 28th of November. For our simple permits, the simple permits are really the types of permits that do not require a detailed plans examiner review. So, it's commonly called in other jurisdictions as your over-the-counter permits, and these different types of permits, we're categorizing as either a tech review permit or a specialist review permit. The tech review permits are really your more, most basic staff review requirements, very commonly a notice of commencement right on the front end, and that includes permit types such as roofing, the commercial fence, new plumbing, miscellaneous electric, commercial AC, and others. So, we're reconfiguring EnerGov to be able to have these permits processed very quickly by our permitting customer services team to do a quick review and have a very quick turnaround time. This is very similar to the roofing permit reconfigurations that we did several months ago for both residential and commercial permits, and we realized a very significant decrease in the overall permit turnaround time for those types of permits. So, we're looking to clean up the roofing permits even further as well as expand those reconfigurations to those other permit types. One step above that will be our specialist review permits, where a little bit of additional and a little bit more specialized staff review is required, but still falling short of that plans examiner review, and that will include most of our marine improvement permits. So, altogether, we'll be conducting some really significant permit restructuring in the coming weeks, consisting of your true push-button permits, where an applicant can log on to our EnerGov CSS platform and complete the application, pay the fees, immediately receive their permit, to an expedited review process for both the simple permit, both types of simple permits, our tech review and our specialist review permits. So, overall, that'll have really good benefits for our permitting department and increase the, decrease the overall turnaround time for all three of those types of permits. So, we've developed a end-of-year action plan, starting on Monday and going through the end of the year. As with previous action plans, we have five goals. As I touched on earlier in my presentation, the first goal is to resume the full utilization of EnerGov for permit applications. So, we'll be reactivating EnerGov for new permit applications a week from Monday, so on the 14th of November. The CCCIA and BIA is aware of this timeline. We met with them on Monday during our Service Delivery Excellence Advocacy Team meeting. And we're also going to be enabling our emergency permit submissions through EnerGov CSS. and we're also going to be enabling our emergency permit submissions through EnerGov CSS, and our goal is by the second week in December to do that. Our ITS team is developing a toggle in EnerGov where applicants will be able to notify the city that they're applying for a permit because of Hurricane Ian damage, and that will toggle off the fees and also allow us to document staff time that's being dedicated to processing emergency permits for FEMA reimbursement purposes. And the second half of that is to import all the emergency paper permit documentation into EnerGov, and there's a lot of good reasons for that, primarily just to have a single source of information for permitting on a specific property, so we need to get that paper permit data into the system. So starting in early December, we'll be doing a full initiative on scanning and importing all those paper permits into EnerGov, and that is planned to be completed by the end of the year. Goal two, complete the reconfigurations of our push-button permits and our simple permits, as I had discussed earlier in the presentation, both Phase 1 and Phase 2 by the first week in December, and the simple permits, the technical review and specialist reviews by the fourth week in December. Goal three is actually related to the types of permits that actually require the plans examiner review. We're going to be reviewing and reconfiguring two different types of teams in the EnerGov system, both the intake team, which are your permitting CSRs, as well as your review teams, and by shrinking the size of those teams, rather than having very large team sizes that review these permit applications, it's actually considered a best practice when corresponding with other users of EnerGov. This should also increase our overall EnerGov system performance, because you're reducing the task volume in each one of those groups. And then finally, the last two goals that we're aiming to complete during this 60-day action plan period are directly related to the assessment and optimization plan that we received from Plant Moran. That's to institute a change management and approval process for any type of modification of the EnerGov system. The goal of that is really to ensure that any action that we take in the system makes things better and doesn't affect anything negatively, so we need to have a formal review process to complete those. And then finally, our fifth goal is to implement an EnerGov role management and subject expert development process. So this is really our staff development goal, ensuring that a position title in the city that is in the EnerGov system has the correct role for that specific position, and that we develop subject matter experts that have a knowledge base in both EnerGov reconfigurations as well as permitting, so that we can have additional hands on deck when it comes to actually making the changes in the system. So both Goal 4 and Goal 5 will be completed by our Service Delivery Excellence Advocacy Team, and overall, with the completion of all five of these goals by the end of the year, we'll be seeing some really significant performances in the system itself in terms of spinning and the slowness. That will be mitigated, and we'll be improving our overall turnaround times for all of our permit types. So with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I know when we first came back after the hurricane, we all wanted to quickly and fastly move to get to locations for these emergency permitting updates, but looking at these results, only 212 issued at the Cape Coral Art Center. Have we looked at staffing there, maybe terminating that location, because it seems to be underutilized? Or maybe we need to make an effort at City Hall to remote that you don't have to wait at City Hall, you could go down to the Art Center?
So, Councilmember, that is something that I'm definitely looking at. It's caught my attention. I think on average, we're probably seeing one client an hour down at the Art Center, and so I think we either need to promote it more, or eventually just begin the transition to close it and centralize all the permit activity back here at City Hall.
Okay, because it seems like most people go to City Hall, and I wasn't against it when we first said it. I think it was needed, it was good, but looking at the numbers, I'm just wondering about the cost that we have operating a trailer there, as opposed to maybe just having a staff member direct people to City Hall. But is there a wait time for emergency permits at City Hall that could be alleviated by having some signage that says we have a second location? Like, what does it normally take if someone walks in the City Hall to get an emergency permit during the course of a day? Is it a 10-minute wait, a half-an-hour wait?
Vince Cataro, Development Services Department. The wait time downstairs after the first week has substantially declined. It's in the half-an-hour range right now, and we're not using a trailer at the Art Center. We're actually in the building.
Okay. Because I know the chief said he was ordering a trailer and things like that, so my question is, at a half-an-hour, have we put any signs up? Maybe we put some signs up for a week that says less wait time down at the Art Center, or anything like that? I would just like to see that in the next update. Mr. City Manager, thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you. Yeah, unrelated, but related to permitting in general. Vince, or Mr. Granbo, so I had an inquiry today. How are we handling the paper permits? Are we internally putting those into our system, or are those just going on a shelf somewhere?
We're not. We're not putting them in the system now. It's all paper right now.
And now, do we have a plan to do that? The reason I ask, and he may have covered it, and I must have missed it, is that people, I guess, it's not uncommon for those things to be searched when there's a property transaction, and so there's been many inquiries where I think it looks like he's... Did I miss that?
Well, go ahead.
I touched on it very briefly, Councilmember, but yes, it is part of our 60-day action plan to incorporate all of the paper permit data into EnerGov, so that people can just search an address and then have all of the permits that have been applied for for that property, including the paper emergency permits. And so I don't know if you need any very detailed information about how that process is going to work, but we've created an emergency permit configuration in EnerGov that's being tested by staff, and so it'll be uploaded into the system under that permit type and be considered a Hurricane Ian emergency permit when people search.
So is there a way, I mean, we categorize them currently, I'd imagine, we don't just throw them in a random shelf, that someone would be able to potentially call and identify a particular property, and I guess inquire whether there's an open permit on that specific property? Is that something that I might be able to provide to them as a remedy?
Yeah, they'll be able to search, either call the city or access the EnerGov customer self-service platform, and it'll have that information if they search the address.
Awesome. Thank you for the information.
Yeah, real quickly, too, I want to, you know, just kind of put it in perspective. I get the building permit report each month, and the last report that I got was September. Permits applied for in September 2022 was 3,302. Permits issued was 3,479. So when you see the stats here that you presented us today, of course, because of the hurricane, we're well above that. What my question is, knowing that, how are we doing on inspections? Because that's the ripple effect. We can get the hurricanes in and out, or I'm sorry, the permits in and out the door pretty quick, but then we have the backend, too. How are we doing with building inspectors? I know we've asked for some additional building inspectors, I believe, through a state mission. How are we handling that right now?
We're handling that in two ways, and you're correct, that the backlog or the glut was at the beginning, and then once you push those through, they have to go somewhere. And where they go is to plan review, and then after plan review and the permits issued, they go to inspections. So the way we're handling that is, we're still working with outside agencies right now, and there's a contract coming forward. We have a purchase order in already, but the contract coming forward to use private sector inspectors for both emergency as well as normal inspections, and we're trying to engage several companies to do that. We're working with procurement on that right now. The other is through mutual aid, and we've had some inspectors come from different jurisdictions, and we've also been able to use private sector inspectors through mutual aid, because it's done through the Building Officials Association of Florida. It's actually the same people. They come in different ways, so that's the way we're handling that. The second part of the equation are new staff members. Of course, staff, all of our staff were, most of the staff, I should say, a good number of them were working towards actually doing the inspections and the plan review, but we were able to free up some time from some individuals, and I participated personally as well, and we're interviewing people to fill the new positions. Three offers are going out tomorrow for new inspectors for the openings that were granted by the city council, and I believe we have three or four of the five on the plans review that are going out, and we just hired a chief plans examiner that started Monday.
And also, looking at what Councilmember Welsh had brought up, looking at the stats, because I'd asked you for the stats earlier today on the permits, it looks like on average you have about 25 to 40 permits that are issued at the Art Center. How many personnel, how many staff members do we have?
One or two. First time. We had a couple the first few days. I think we're still doing that, but one is really a volunteer. Early on, it was two staff members and a volunteer. We're down to a volunteer and one staff member.
I just want to make sure we're having six, seven people down there and only having 25 permits during the course of the day, but it doesn't sound like that's the case. That's all the questions I have. I appreciate it. Any other questions reference to the update on the permit? And so next, my understanding, by the 14th, we should be back up and running and accepting all permits. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 10, ordinances and resolutions. We have 10A. We'll start with Resolution 202-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 202-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements lying in lots 4 through 7, block 1546, Cape Coral, Unit 17, Part 1, as more particularly described herein. Property located at 329 Del Prado Boulevard North, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Patrick Colton White, Senior Planner and DSD downstairs. This is Resolution 202-22. The aerial depicted here shows the property outlined in red. The applicant is Del Prado Inn 329 LLC. The lot is a little over one acre, 1.25 acres. It's at 329 Del Prado Boulevard North in the Infield District, and the request is to vacate 888 square feet of platted public utility and drainage easements. The property is zoned commercial and has a commercial professional future land use designation, and the proposed vacation is depicted on the exhibit before you in blue. I've shown it on the aerial and on the applicant's sketch to the right. The orange area is a former city alley where we retained the underlying easements. It is not being impacted or affected by this proposal. What this proposal will do is vacate that area in blue, allowing the applicant to develop closer towards that alley. As I mentioned, there's no right-of-way vacation proposed. The vacation is an unused internal public utility easement. We've received letters of no objection from our three utility groups. Easements are reserved to maintain a six-foot perimeter public utility easement. We found that the request met the requirements of LDC 3.4.5, as consistent with the comprehensive plan. On August 9th, the hearing examiner recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution. We've received no correspondence. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. There's anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 202-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 202-22?
No move.
Second. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Resolution 203-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 203-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Lucerne Canal right-of-way, located adjacent to lots 15 and 16, block 5, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 15 and 16, block 5, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2. Property located at 5646 Riverside Drive, providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is also a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Struve.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers for the record. Mike Struve, Planning Team Coordinator with the City Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the City Clerk's office. This is a privately initiated vacation application by the owners, Brian and Kristen Haig. The owners are requesting to vacate 309 square feet of unexcavated canal right-of-way and 521 square feet of platted easements on their site, which is located at 5646 Riverside Drive. This property is located in the extreme southeast portion of the City of Cape Coral. The aerial map shows the subject property outlined in red here. The property is improved with a single-family home, a marine improvement in a seawall. You'll note that this site is located in an area of the City of Cape Coral that is built out with single-family homes. The subject property and all surrounding sites have a single-family future land use classification and single-family residential or R1 zoning. This particular site is a two-lot, platted site, a little over 10,000 square feet, and there is an uneven strip of unexcavated canal right-of-way that exists between the rear property line or west property line of the site and the edge of the water of the Lucene Canal, and that's what the applicant is requesting to vacate. And this shows the right-of-way area that is being proposed to be vacated by the applicant. You'll notice the uneven feature of the canal right-of-way along the length of the canal, adjacent to the canal. This shows the platted easements on the owner's site that the owners are requesting to vacate. We've analyzed this request and provided a summary here on this particular slide. The right-of-way area itself is small in area. It is uneven, and staff anticipates that this right-of-way area will not provide any future benefit to the city. The three utility providers have reviewed this application, and they do not object to either of the requested vacations. The platted easements will not be needed, and that's because the city will retain an easement along the new rear property line that will be sufficient for providing a continuous perimeter easement around the site. Staff is recommending approval of both vacation requests with conditions. The hearing examiner reviewed this case on August 9th, and the hearing examiner recommended approval with staff conditions. There were no speakers at public input. We have received three phone calls concerning this case. Just all three individuals wanted more information about the application, and I'll stand by in case you have questions.
Thank you. I now open up the public hearing. There's anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 203-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 203-22?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution 207-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 207-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for easements underlying a previously vacated alley and public utility and drainage easements lying between lots 63 through 68 and 69 through 75, block 3367, Cape Coral, Unit 65, as more particularly described herein. Property located at 808 Southwest 42nd Terrace, providing an effective date.
This is also a quasi-judicial hearing, and anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. Justin Heller, Senior Planner with Cape Coral Planning Division. This is a location, vacation of plat located at 808 Southwest 42nd Terrace. Basically, they're requesting to vacate some underlying public utility and drainage easements, 8,387 square feet. These are located in block 3367, Unit 65, between lots 63 through 68 and 69 through 75. There's a current aerial of the site highlighted in blue. So a little background, this is a 1.75-acre site. It's at the corner of Skyline Boulevard and Southwest 42nd Terrace. It's got a future land use of commercial professional with commercial zoning and is serviced by city utilities. There was an alley that was previously vacated by resolution 140-91. This resolution, however, retained all easements underlying the alley as well as the adjoining six-foot wide platted easements. So this vacation, the owners are requesting to vacate those previously retained easements. Here's a sketch of the proposed easements to be vacated. So staff finds the easements will not provide a future transportation, public access, water management, or other foreseeable public benefit. The three utility providers have provided letters of no objection, and the six-foot wide public utility easement will be retained around the site. So planning staff is recommending approval with conditions, and the hearing examiner also recommends approval with conditions outlined in resolution 207-22. The hearing was held on July 12th. I stand by for any questions you may have.
Now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance resolution 207-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution 207-22?
No move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 85-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 85-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as a tract or parcel of land lying in a portion of the northeast quarter of section 36, Township 43 South, Range 22 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. From agricultural to neighborhood commercial zone, property is located at 3926, 4120, and 4140 Kismet Parkway, providing severability and an effective date.
This is also a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. City Council, for the record. Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Planning Division. This is ordinance 85-22. It's a privately initiated rezoning application. There's two owners, Bill Keenan Equity Trust Company. And Equity Trust Company is actually owned by Bill Keenan, but they're both on the deed, so we concluded those both. That's four parcels that's at the southwest corner of Old Burnstour Road and Kismet Parkway. It's a little over 17 and a half acres in size. It's within the urban services reserve area, so there are not any utilities present to the site nor planned through the UEP process. And then the applicant's request is a rezone from agricultural to neighborhood commercial zoning. Here's an aerial map and some brief background for you. The majority of the property is undeveloped. There is one single-family home that is constructed sort of in the middle or the outer edge of this parcel. Within this sort of section of unsubdivided land, there is one additional piece of property that is not a part of this that is also unsubdivided. I just want to let you know that it's vegetated, but it was not part of this application. This was recently amended to the Commercial Activities Center land use in 2019. And then there was two other parcels that were also amended to the CAC in 2021. And we have been told by the applicant through his letter of intent that they are seeking the NC zoning to develop a mixed-use project. So the current zoning of all four parcels is agricultural, and then the applicant's proposed zoning is neighborhood commercial, except for that unsubdivided parcel that is located to the west of the site. Everything surrounding this site is single-family residential. So we did our analysis per the land development code, and it has six standards for review. The first standard is whether or not the proposed district is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Staff finds that the NC district is the only district that is compatible with the CAC future land use, other than being developed through a PUD. The second standard is whether the full range of uses allowed in the proposed district will be compatible with the existing uses in the area. The NC district was designed as a mixed-use sort of neighborhood-friendly district where you have restaurants, offices, retail. It eliminates a lot of the more intense uses you might find in the commercial districts. There's limitations on things like drive-throughs and things that would develop, you know, would produce heavy loads of traffic or lots of noise. This was fit, this was been, designed several years ago to sort of fit seamlessly into residential areas to provide goods and services to the residents that's there. There's also extra limitation or extra restrictions on like landscaping and things like that in order to make sure that there's a good level of compatibility between the NC district and the surrounding residential uses. So staff finds that it is compatible with this area. The third standard is whether the range of uses in the proposed district will be compatible with the future uses that are in this area. And this is kind of similar to the last standard that we looked at. The future uses that are proposed here will be single-family residential homes. We aren't quite sure what will go on the other agricultural zone property that is located to the west, but for the majority of the proposed, proposed or potential uses in the area, we find that the NC district will be compatible with this area. The next standard is whether the proposed district will serve a community need or broader public purpose. The city has a well-documented need for multifamily, mixed-use, and non-residential development. This will allow those to occur in this area. Single-family homes are not allowed within the NC district. And then we've also mentioned, just made mention that multifamily is a need that has been outlined in a couple of studies over the past couple of years. The next standard is the characteristics of the proposed rezone area are suitable for the uses permitted in the district. We mentioned that the NC district is consistent with the CAC land use. The site is at the intersection of two collector roads, so you are located at a commercial node. The site is large enough and has adequate width and depth to accommodate a quality development. And there really isn't a lot of other non-residential uses in the area currently, so this would provide some sort of neighborhood services to that area up in the northwest Cape Coral. And then the last is whether a proposed zoning district would require, would, would create fewer potential adverse impacts to the existing area. We mentioned that the NC is really the only thing that's allowed within this future land use classification. If this NC zoning is not adopted, then we'd probably be looking at a PUD that'd have to be approved for this site. We also found that it's consistent with a couple of the policies in the comprehensive plan. And then staff's recommendation is approval of this rezone based upon our analysis through the comp plan and the LDC. And the hearing examiner also recommended approval of ordinance 85-22. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open up the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 85-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 85-22?
No move.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 83-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 83-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from public facilities to multifamily residential land use for property described as all of block 2088, unit 31, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 1429 Northeast 15th Avenue, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, Planning Team Coordinator of the City's Planning Division. My credentials may be obtained at the City Clerk's office. This is ordinance 83-22, which is a privately initiated future land use amendment involving just under 10 acres in block 2088. The request is to amend the future land use from public facilities to multifamily. Property address is 1429 Northeast 15th Avenue, located in northeastern Cape Coral, just west of Del Prado Boulevard, and just south of the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard and Diplomat Parkway East. The property you see here is just left of center here. It's a large, currently undeveloped tract, though it has a history, which I'll get into with the further, further into this presentation. As you can see, surrounding area has sporadic, single-family development, particularly to the west and southwest, though there's some houses to the north, and across Del Prado Boulevard to the east. These maps show the current future land use, map on the left, and the proposed with the map on the right. The property, subject property is public facilities in light blue. The yellow indicates single-family residential future land use, red, commercial professional, brown, multifamily. The request before us is to amend this tract from public facilities to multifamily, so you see the change from light blue to brown. Some, some background. This site is owned by the Lee County School Board. This was formerly the site of an alternative learning center back in the late 2000s, early 2010s. So while it is undeveloped, now it was acting as a school roughly about six or seven years or so. As I recall, mainly portables were located on site. School Board is looking to sell this property. They're removing some of their properties, putting it out on the market. So they're looking to sell to a residential developer, and this site already has multifamily RML zoning and has for quite some time. It was R3 prior to the code change in 20, in 2019 that moved us from the land use and development regulations to today's land development code. The existing public facilities future land use is incompatible with multifamily development, and so that's why the applicant has come forward with this change, proposed change to multifamily. When we receive these future land use map amendments, we review these looking at our comprehensive plan and the land development code. And so a main policy that we look at for, for determining the appropriateness of the site of multifamily is policy 1.7 of our future land use element. There are four citing criteria, and we saw that this fully met three of those, and so we felt this is a fairly good, good site for such multifamily. The housing goal of the comprehensive plan states that there's a, should be a, the goal of the city to provide a variety of residential options for their residents, both in type and tenure. And so multi, as you well know, Cape Coral is noted for its strong single-family residential, base, if you will, tax base, if you will. So multifamily would add some, some diversity, if you will, in housing options for residents within Cape Coral. So with that, we find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we presented this before our Planning and Zoning Commission, the local planning agency, back on September 7th, and that commission recommended six to one to approve the proposed amendment. With that, staff recommends approval. I'll stand by for any questions, and I understand the applicant is here too, is here also.
Thank you. I now open up the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 83-22, please come forward.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Staff, for the record, Marcus Goodson, Executive Director, Lee County Housing Authority. I don't know if there's much that I need to say. This is a project that we are looking at with our co-developer partners, Birdsong Housing, to develop for affordable housing. We also have another project that we partnered with Birdsong that's over on Pine Island Road. It's the Sevitas Project, which we should be breaking ground on in early January. So we are affordable housing providers. I don't know how much, how much you know of my history. I was the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of City of Fort Myers for 15 years before I retired and went to Puerto Rico to help rebuild the public housing stock after Hurricane Maria. Came back to this area and took over the Lee County Housing Authority where we are looking to expand affordable housing base and options in this community. So we're here tonight hoping that the approval will move forward, and we can move forward with this project. We also have an application in the Lee County government for half a million dollars in funding for this particular project as well, that we're optimistic and hopeful that we'll receive funding in the next week or so from the county. So don't know if you have any questions, don't know if you needed to know all of that information, but I shared it just in case it was helpful.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 83-22? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for approval on ordinance 83-22?
No move. Second.
Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, maybe Wyatt can answer my question. The applicant said this is going to be similar to the Sevitas project that we approved. Is that multifamily low at Sevitas, or is that RMM?
No.
It's in the commercial corridor, Pine Island Road District, where we do permit-
So they have the ability to go taller. So this, this project itself would go how many stories tall?
It's RML, which the maximum height for that is 50 feet.
And then with 10 acres, what would be the maximum density they could put on this site?
It's just under 10. At 16 per acre, you're looking at something like 159 units.
Okay. So as, as much as I'm for affordable housing, as much as I'm for this project going forward, I don't know if 10 acres of space is enough for us to do this when I look at this being a commercial corridor, or maybe something like neighborhood commercial. So I know the, the land use is there. Is there a possibility the applicant could come back and change this from RML to RMM so we can maybe get a little more density?
Not wanting to speak for the applicant, that would be a rezone, which would be a separate application, just, just to put that on the record.
They're looking just for RML. Okay.
Both of which would be consistent with the multifamily future land use.
And this would have to rezone to go to neighborhood commercial as well if we were to do something similar to the previous, where we would incorporate some commercial into this property as well as potential multifamily?
Well, if you, to, let me take a step back here. The multifamily future land use is a residential-only future land use classification. So to try and permit any sort of non-residential uses would require a different future land use classification, some sort of mixed-use classification.
Okay. I just want to be careful before we give up more of our limited and very, you know, this is Del Prado Road and Diplomat. It's, it's got me between a rock and a hard place because yes, we need affordable housing, but we also need to preserve our commercials. So luckily, I'm voting sixth or seventh tonight, so I don't think my decision really has to be made.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I'm against this. That's a, a prime piece of property owned Del Prado that I believe should stake, should be developed with commercial. I really like the idea of apartments being built there.
Yeah, I, when you take a look at this major corridor here, you know, we all sit here each and every week for many months, and we talk about exploring opportunities for additional, additional commercial development in our city and having a 92 to 8% ratio. If we keep making these types of decisions, all we're going to do is we'll never, we'll always be at 92 to 8%. We'll never change. So if this particular parcel was maybe somewhere else, but on a major thoroughfare, I think this is a prime location for the commercial that we're looking for. So for that reason, I, I cannot, I cannot support this, and my vote will be no. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. I've already closed the public hearing, correct?
We, you have a motion in a second.
And we have a motion in a second. And Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Can you please clarify the motion?
I have a motion to approve ordinance 83-22.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
No.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Gunter.
No.
That's three ayes, four nays. Motion failed.
Okay, we'll move on to item 52-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 52-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use for property described as lots 12 through 16, block 3100, unit 62, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 1917 Southwest Santa Barbara Place, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening again. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, Planning Team Coordinator of the City's Planning Division. Ordinance 52-22 is a privately initiated future land use map amendment involving just over a half acre of, of property, lots 12 through 16, block 3100, to amend the land use from commercial professional to multifamily future land use. Property is located at 1917 Southwest Santa Barbara Boulevard. It's located- It's located, the address would say southwestern Cape Coral, but it's in the southeastern quadrant by geography, just west of Santa Barbara Boulevard. Here's an aerial of the site. As you can see, the subject property is undeveloped, though it is flanked by existing buildings, multifamily buildings to the northeast and south. The surrounding area is very well-developed, mainly with single-family detached housing to the west and northwest. Some commercial structures outside of the 500-foot buffer are located to the south. This is the map of the subject property. That parcel is in that hatching, in the block that is completely commercial-professional. The proposal would go from that, which, from commercial-professional to multifamily and brown, as you can see here. Surrounding area primarily single-family to the west, also east past southeast Santa Barbara Boulevard. Properties along Santa Barbara are commercial-professional, indicated red. Additional multifamily properties are located to the north on the north of southwest 19th Street. Some background, some history. It's one developed, undeveloped property. This block has been commercial-professional since 2010. It's been, was rezoned to commercial in 2011. There are eight residential structures on seven properties on block 3100. So it's approximately half-built out. No commercial activity has occurred or has been proposed for this block since 2005. Multifamily residential developments are adjacent to the property, as you saw in the aerial. When we reviewed this in our comprehensive plan, we felt that, we saw that this fully met two out of four multifamily residential citing criteria, partially met a third. Now, when we do these changes from commercial to multifamily, we also look at the city's commercial citing guidelines. The idea being, you know, are we changing something that's a really good commercial site to something else? And so Policy 114, 1.114, 1.14, there are eight criteria. And this site fully met three of those and partially met two additional criteria. Though, as you saw on the map, this represents a spot, land use for lack of a better term, where one property being changed is intrusive to the commercial viability of all the other properties on this block. So that's, that was a concern to staff when we reviewed this. And for that reason, we found, we find that this proposed amendment is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And so staff recommended denial. Perhaps reflecting the, I'm near, call it a toss-up, if you will. At the August 3rd, 2022 meeting, PNC recommended four to three to recommend approval of the request. So it was a very, very tight vote. A lot of good discussion was had on both sides regarding this amendment. We've received no public correspondence. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 52-22? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurkowitz, President of BJM Consulting, and representing the applicant. Cape Life LLC. Wyatt, as usual, did a great job presenting this case. This case unto itself, if you read my letter of intent, is a spot land use which would turn to a spot zoning. The most important part of my letter of intent was the last paragraph, where I said, "We believe it would be prudent for city staff to initiate a land use and zoning change for the rest of the northern section of block 3100, bringing all the substantial existing multifamily development into compliance." My understanding is this. And, and you also have to understand, and I know you're all excited about doing commercial, but you don't determine where commercial goes. The market determines where commercial goes. I was up there, we took large sections of this city and land used them commercial-professional. The market never reacted. Councils that followed us 10, 15, 20 years later had to go back and change them. It is, you have to understand the market conditions. This has been 2010. Nothing commercial has developed on this block. What has developed on this block? This is a subject property. There are two duplexes to the north. There is a six-unit, single-story, a 12, a six-unit, two-story, developed in 2007. Six-unit, six-bedroom, six-bath over here, excuse me. They call it, it's a duplex with, or a three-unit rather, I'm sorry, three-unit with six bedrooms and six baths. You have a 12-unit to the south. And way down here to the, on the southern property, southern of the, of 3100, is a, a four-bedroom, two-bath duplex built in 1984. This property, as it sits, is undevelopable. It is totally surrounded by multifamily. If you don't make a change, you have for all, for all practical purposes condemned this property. It can't be, it just can't be developed. As staff will tell you, when you develop next to a use, a residential use, you have to have a site, an extended site setback. With the size of this lot, surrounded on three sides by commercial and, excuse me, three sides by multifamily and single-family across the street, the footprint of the building allowed on this site will be minimal. I asked staff, in my letter of intent, to consider rezoning, excuse me, changing the land use to reflect the development on this block, which is this line right here, just south of the multiple, three multifamilies that are on Santa Barbara and going to the south of the 12 units that are on 19th. That would, this would remain, this would be the only piece of undeveloped. It would be turned multifamily, so they could develop multifamily. And then the remaining partial to the south, which is pretty much vacant, except for this old duplex, is a good opportunity for commercial. So if you approve this and direct staff, and I believe the only way you can approve this is to include, to direct staff to change the northern half of block 3021 to multifamily, to reflect the existing development pan, existing development, and leave the southern commercial-professional to allow for some commercial-professional in this block. I went by the site again today. The existing residential in the area, multifamily area, has roof damage and tree damage. They're re-roofing them. This ain't going anywhere anytime soon. There are a couple roofs already started, couple blue tarped. So this is not something that is going to go away, where somebody could assemble and tear down. People that own this property, residents that, and owners that own the property, surrounding this single piece of property are investing significant amounts of money in that property as we speak. It is not going away. It is not going to be open for assemblage. If you do not change the land use and then eventually the zoning of this property, you have, for all practical purposes, regulatory condemn this property. You have to recognize the market conditions. This site has not been attractive to a commercial use since 2010. You have to understand the existing multifamily development in the area is not going away. And you have to understand that this application by itself is not enough. You have to also direct staff to make the changes as laid out in my letter of intent to allow good and proper use of block 3100. Just think for a minute. Because of the storm, and it's very front and center now, these folks making these investments in these roofs, it's probably insurance claims. What happens when you get an insurance claim, your insurance company drops you. How are these people going to go for insurance when they're pre-existing non-conforming uses? Who's going to insure a building that not, that cannot be rebuilt? There are a lot of things to consider. This is not just, I want to impact the 92, 8% residential, non-residential component mix in the city of Cape Coral. It is not that simple. You do not determine how that works. The market determines where it goes. You can want to help the market, but you cannot make the decisions. This is not a good place. This particular property, the northern half of block of 3100, is not a good place for non-residential development. The market has told you that. The existing development has told you that. The existing development pattern has told you that. And the recent investment in those properties by the owners as a result of damage to storm told you that it's not changing anytime soon. For those reasons, I ask that you make a motion to approve this and direct your staff to change the northern half of block 3100 as presented this evening by this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 52-22? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 52-22?
I'll make a motion to approve it so we can discuss it, 52-22.
We have a motion in a second. And Councilmember Tate?
So originally, I was a little confused about this. I did drive by the property as well, and it is mostly multifamily. I don't, and I see Wyatt shaking his head, so he agrees. I don't know if you can, if this were to, if council were to want to move forward to approve this, if the additional request to change the rest of the property could be done in this. I see Brian going, "No," so.
Now, what, what the motion is right now is to approve this particular ordinance only for this property. That gets approved, then what my recommendation would be is for city council to inform the city manager to have his staff come back and change the surrounding properties that are multifamily to multifamily.
It does make sense when you look at the, when you drive there and you see, especially because it's on the backside of the property, it's not on the main road. So to me, that's, that's where all the multifamily is. And all those duplexes, they aren't going away. So if we did nothing to this property, then it's useless, just like Mr. Mazurkowitz said. So I feel like we have to move forward so we can at least get the benefit of the use of the land and the project. And then after that, we could direct you to make that one strip commercial, because nothing has happened there. So that, that is my case for it. Especially, like I said, had I not driven there today and taken a second look, it would have been different, but I did. So we'll see what everybody else has to say.
Councilmember Tate? I'm sorry, Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Has the applicant attempted to contact any other of the six property owners in order to bring this together as one large future land use map amendment like you're suggesting?
The property owners did not.
So being that we're voting on just this one property, I find it hard to do what you said in the beginning, a spot zoning change and a spot map change. What I would like to do is potentially have the applicant that feels that their property is useless the way it is, reach out to their neighbors and maybe bring this forward as all two, four, six, seven owners coming together to ask for this change. I think, I think I would be more comfortable voting yes on this in that sense. But as a side note, if we were going to move forward with this and direct staff, I would feel more comfortable leaving out the properties which are dated, which unfortunately, they're the 12 units that are on the south end of this, the 1923 and the 1931 properties. If I were to direct staff to change this in order to make it happen, I would only do half for my fellow councilmembers to hear that. But at this point, without any other property owners wanting this to change to residential multifamily or hearing from them, I would find it very hard to alienate this one to be stuck in the center of a commercial block. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you. Wyatt, I may have missed it. Did you, did you mention, is there any assemblage whatsoever of any, of any of these parcels on the, on the site? For that whole block?
There is some assemblage, as I recall, on the east side, fronting Santa Barbara. On the south half, the half that Joe had mentioned.
Basically the vacant portion there that's on, on.
Yeah, that, that Joe suggested that should be retained as commercial-professional.
Do you happen to know how many of those properties? I mean, is it pretty much the whole frontage there that's on?
It's not the entire frontage, but I think it's, it's something like eight, like four parcels.
By doing this, we would also be making that, that property useless to those owners that have maybe some potential desire to book commercial there, in theory.
It's all about the duplex.
Okay. Yeah, the assemblage on the east side, south half of that block's roughly about 12 lots. It's everything but the existing duplex.
Sure. Okay. So then, yeah, my position stands. I mean, I think it goes both ways. So now that property is useless if we basically, by making this, in you guys' words, spot zoning approval, now we're, the rest is going to follow. We've already discussed that, a couple members up here have discussed it. We see this a lot, and, and there's a lot of statements that are made with regards to no use in the past as far as commercial development or no desire. But our obligations here, they're all, they're for the, the current needs, but they're also for the future needs. So I think that we need to keep in mind that we're only halfway built out. So some of these roadways, in particular Santa Barbara, Diplomat, those sorts of things, those, those have been identified and pegged as future high-traffic areas. Potential to have that commercial growth. Sure, it's not, doesn't exist currently, hasn't existed in the last five or 10 years. But I can tell you that if we continue to go through here with that methodology and say, oh, well, this isn't going to be, you know, commercial, nobody's wanted commercial in the last five or 10 years, they certainly were condemning that from ever being commercial in the future. Because if we now wipe that out because of what's happened in the past, moving forward, there's going to continue to be these multifamily projects that are going on this site. And that's going to abolish any future whatsoever possibility of commercial use. So I would agree with staff on this. I'm, I'm going to be voting for denial on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You know, when you talk about spot zoning, you know, I think all of us probably are opposed to spot zoning. I do agree with Mr. Mazurkowitz, his methodology, what should be multifamily there and what should not be. But unfortunately, and I just want to remind councils, mine from a previous case that we had, I believe it was Avalon Engineering that came in. And we all said, well, if we're going to do this, the rest of this should be commercial as well. We didn't make that decision that night. We continued the case, we had them come back in. And we all can sit here and say, and so can Mr. Mazurkowitz, that the best zoning for this particular area should be how he described it. Unfortunately, we didn't hear from the other property owners. We don't know what their intent is. Do they want it to be commercial? Do they want it to go to multifamily? I agree that if you look at this, and this is much different than the case we heard earlier with a big, large, open area that, that has a lot of potential. This here, basically 50% of this block has already been developed. So if we were listening to a case where all the multifamily, like Mr. Mazurkowitz described, we were approving that, my vote would probably be yes. But because it's only this one particular spot zoning in the middle, we haven't heard from the other property owners, do they want to go to multifamily? Do they want to stay with commercial? We don't know that. So for me, I can't make that decision based on an assumption that we don't have input from the other property owners. So for this particular case, with the amount of information that we have today before us, my vote will be no. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam, uh, Councilmember?
Well, based on all that, can we, Brian, can we continue this to a later time? Can we withdraw the motions and seek a response from the property owners and take a look at this again? And see what their feedback might be, rather than one vote one way or the other, taking this in a direction that's going to affect, impact somebody?
You can definitely withdraw your motion, and you'll just be in limbo. However, if you do that, it's really up to Mr. Mazurkowitz if his client wants to go ahead and contact the other property owners to come back. Because if he doesn't want to do that, and he wants to flip the coin to figure out which way you're going to go on the vote, and then decide what his client is going to do after that, you know? But if he wants it to be continued, I think you, you can do that. It is, you can continue it anyway, but if his client is not willing to go talk to the other property owners, what good is that going to do?
Joe?
Thank Councilmember. I, I'm sure he would. I don't know why he wouldn't. I think the, the other property owners have just showed you what land use and zoning they're interested in keeping. They're all in. They're all investing tens of thousands of dollars and putting new roofs on their buildings. If they wanted to go to commercial, now would be the time to do it. But I also can count, and I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to go back and contact the other owners of these adjoining properties and see if they're interested in, in going back to the multi, the multifamily land use and zoning, which I'm sure most of them think they have.
Then the motion maker would remove her motion if this, I think I had a second.
You'll need to do a motion to continue and to avoid any type of advertising issues. We would have to do a date certain.
A date certain. So, does the second agree that I can pull?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So then I would make a motion to continue ordinance 52-22 to a date certain, which would, you would need at least...
Give me, give me two months.
Yeah, I was going to say, long after I'm gone, sometime in, sometime in January, I guess, let me, I don't know what the next, what the, if you take two months, that would be January, and I, I don't know, I don't have a calendar for the meeting dates, January 11th or 18th, since it's after the 4th, or the 18th or 25th. I don't, I don't know when is a voting meeting. Kimberly, can you help me out there?
If I may, the proposed calendar, which you have not agreed to yet...
Right.
...has a regular meeting on January 11th and January 25th.
Then it would be to a date certain, January 25th.
One second.
And can, can we include in that motion that we agree that there will be a regular meeting on January 25th? Okay. I mean, thank you.
Okay, so we have Jan, continue to a date certain...
Date certain of January 25th, which we agree to have a meeting.
Okay. All right. Got a few more lights here. Mr...
No, that works.
You're good?
Yep.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I mean, I agree that if this comes back and it looks good, most of us would be okay with it, but to move it to a date certain, not knowing if we're going to be able to contact all the owners or if they're going to be on board, I would prefer to just vote this as a no and let Mr. Mazurkowitz go do his work and then reintroduce it. If we're talking two months, it's not that hard to get another introduction in. I mean, we all do like to sit here at the end of the meeting with Kimberly and listen to her speak, but for me, a no on this doesn't mean it's dead. It means come back with more people, come back with this fixed the way that you're saying, because if we approve this in January, then we're going to have to direct staff to do the same thing he's asking today, which is change at all.
No, no. If, if I have the owners in, by January, I will come in and say that we have the owners and are all supportive of a change, and we will make the additions and changes to our land use and pay the additional fees. The, the only thing that's, we would lose if you vote no today instead of continuing, we lose the portion of our application fee that we paid for this application and have to redo it again.
Okay.
So that's, we, if, the only way I'm...
With explaining that to me, I, then I'm okay with the date certain.
The only way I would bring it back, I mean, I completely understand, the only way I would bring it back is if the adjoining properties are willing to come in and support the change of land use and, and eventually zoning.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, then I'm, I'm okay with the date certain.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a, a motion...
Jennifer seconded, I think.
I second it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion, second on the floor. We're going to continue ordinance 52-22 to a date certain, January 25th?
2023.
2023. Okay, so that's the motion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
And the council's going to agree to have a meeting on January 25th, 2023?
Yes.
That's not in...
Okay. Thank you, Brian. All right, Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, I think we'll take a 10-minute recess here. We'll come back at 7:13.[875.12]
Ninety dash twenty-two. Everybody ready?
Two minutes to spare.
Yep. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to ordinance ninety dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance ninety dash twenty-two. An ordinance providing for the annexation of six parcels of land described as lots one, two, fourteen, and fifteen, block three, Pondela Heights, unit two, and lots twenty and twenty-one, block two, Pondela Heights, unit two, as more particularly described herein. Providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for City of Cape Coral Fire Department and utility services, providing for severability and an effective date.
Due to the nature of this matter, anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in. I'll turn it over to check.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, City Council, once again Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. This is ordinance ninety dash twenty-two. This is a voluntary annexation of six parcels in northeast Cape Coral. The owner of all six properties is Samuel Johnson. It's just barely over one acre in size. It has frontage on Pondela Road. And it's, you know, Pondela Road, south of Pine Island Road. This would be in the urban services transition area upon annexation. There is utilities that are available nearby serviced by the City of Cape Coral. And once again, they're looking to annex six properties into the City of Cape Coral. Surrounding development to the south and to the west is single-family homes that are still within unincorporated Lee County. To the north and to the east, which are lands that are in the City of Cape Coral, you have a mixture of undeveloped land, some multifamily, and also some industrial to the north across Pondela. Site's totally undeveloped. We mentioned that south and to the west is still within unincorporated Lee County. It's adjacent to the city on two sides, the north and the west. The applicant has stated a desire to develop commercial uses on this property. And then if this property, if these properties are annexed, they would have to do a future land use map amendment and a rezoning application to develop the property. We looked at this per LDC Section 3.51, which states the purpose of the annexations. Staff finds that this does implement the conference of plan by adding potential additional non-residential uses to the city's land inventory. It increases the city's, potentially increases the city's inventory of non-residential lands. This would result in the removal of some enclaves. You would close up some of the holes that you have that are still unincorporated Lee County. And this would be a logical extension of city boundaries, seeing as you have City of Cape Coral land adjacent on two sides. Service provisions. Our utility department has stated that they can serve with water and sewer to the site. The City of Cape Coral Police and Fire Department have also stated that they can serve and provide service to these properties. Staff's recommendation is approval of this ordinance. I stand by for any further comments.
I'll now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance ninety dash twenty-two, please come forward.
Hello?
How are you? State your name for...
My name is Phil Deems. Go ahead.
I think you have to swear.
My name is Phil Deems. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I represent the Sam Johnson family.
Is he being sworn in? Madam City Clerk?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I certainly do.
Thank you.
I represent the Sam Johnson family. And I'm old as dirt. I've been in town since August of seventy-five. And so I've seen a lot of changes, believe it or not. Fifteen thousand population back then. But anyway, I represent the Sam Johnson family. And I wanted to put everybody at ease. I know if I was on council and if I had property, you know, adjacent to this, especially the residence to the, to the south, that I'd like to know what in the world's going on with my neighbor. Well, Sam Johnson is one of the best neighbors you're gonna have. What he wants to do is to bring this county property that's basically useless for a single-family residential, to bring it in and annex it into the city. And then to apply for either a land use change or a zoning change, generally CP, which would be commercial professional, which aligns with a like-kind properties and uses all up and down Pondela, and very much the same type of uses as you see on Del Prado, Cape Coral Parkway. So I wanted to put everybody at ease as to what our intentions are, why we want to have it annexed into the city. And my aerial shows, I don't know, I guess you probably have seen it, but anyway, the aerial shows that it's a little over an acre in size. Oh, thank you. And so that's basically it. And if there's any questions or any thoughts, why, I'd be happy to, to make comments. I would like to make a public announcement. I know this is a little off the cuff, but being in my type of business, I'm getting inundated daily with calls from people outside of our area. I want to put our people on notice. We are basically a handshake, everybody's honest type of community. We've got guys coming in that want to assign your insurance benefits. We've got guys coming in, roofers and everybody in the trades from outside of the area. And I'm a big proponent of you deal with your people that you know. And then by all means, don't let them assign your insurance benefits and don't pay anything upfront until you have a written contract and it is reviewed by your attorney. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ninety dash twenty-two? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance ninety dash twenty-two? Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd? Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two. An ordinance providing for the annexation of five parcels of land described as parcels of land lying in the northwest one quarter of Section 20 Township 44 South Range 23, Eastleigh County, Florida. As more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for City of Cape Coral Fire Department and utility services, providing for severability and an effective date.
Due to the nature of this matter, anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Chad?
Okay, once again, Mayor, City Council, for the record Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. This is ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two. This is another voluntary annexation. The applicants for this, you have a couple of applicants who have Haunt Industries and you also have Lee Memorial Health System that are owners of this property. The size of the site is a little over forty-one acres. This has frontage on Pine Island Road and it's south of that. And it's a little bit east of the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Pine Island Road and Burnt Store Road. This would be in the transition area of the urban services boundary upon annexation. There are utilities that are available nearby to the site that are within the City of Cape Coral. And then the applicant's request is to annex five parcels into the City of Cape Coral boundaries. Surrounding development consists of the Royalty Golf Course Committee to the south. You have Sandoval, the single-family homes and the multifamily that's located a little bit to the east. And then to the northwest, you have the Publix Shopping Center at Coral Shores. And then you have some sporadic land that has, that was partially, some of those annexed into the City of Cape Coral a couple of months ago that's located to the west at the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Burnt Store Road and Pine Island Road. Findings of fact, the site is mostly undeveloped and consists of five parcels. The development that is there is currently, Haunt Industries owns sort of like a storage area and they conduct some business out of there. We mentioned the surrounding development. It's adjacent to the City of Cape Coral on three sides, the northeast and the west. The applicant has stated a desire to develop commercial uses on the property. The site is still currently serviced by the Greater Pine Island Water Association. So they have service rights until 2050 for this property unless there is some sort of agreement worked out with them and the City of Cape Coral to prefer the city to provide water to them. And in order for this to be developed, you'll have to have a future land use map amendment and a rezoning for this to be developed in the future. Staff finds that it implements all four policies within LDC Section 3.51. And we mentioned about the service provisions. The utilities department has stated that sewer service available is available to the site. Jipewa has water service and the police and fire department can both service this site upon annexation. We recommend approval and we're here for any further questions.
Open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Were you sworn in, ma'am?
No, we do that now.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right.
Please state your name.
My name's Christine Fisher and I'm the Principal Planner at Johnson Engineering. I'm representing... Ponte LLC and Lee Memorial Health Systems who own the subject properties. All right. As Chad mentioned, this is a voluntary annexation and includes five parcels as well as two gap parcels, which have some negligible acreage that were discovered when we did the boundary survey. In total, it's forty-one point seven-three acres. It is south of southwest Pine Island Road between Royalty Boulevard and Sandoval Parkway. Parcels to the west were recently annexed, as Chad mentioned. And this area is located in Lee County's Urban Reserve Overlay, which is an area that's designated to be suitable for annexation and to eliminate enclaves. Annexation of these parcels would extend the city boundary along southwest Pine Island Road by a quarter mile. Four of the parcels are vacant and zoned agricultural, too. On the fifth parcel is the Haunt LLC site. It's a construction office and they store some equipment there. And those are currently zoned, neighborhood commercial or CN one and IG in the county. We will be requesting Pine Island Road District flume designation and commercial corridor zoning pending annexation approval. And we went through and for these reasons, we believe the annexation should be considered. Implants the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the Pine Island Road District's overall land use plan. It's consistent with policy, flu policy 1.15L. The annexation increases the city's inventory of non-residential lands. It allows for consistent commercial development pattern along southwest Pine Island Road under a unified Cape Coral jurisdiction. It increases the city's inventory of non-residential lands by forty-one point seven acres, plus or minus. It also results in some removal of enclave area. As I mentioned, Lee County considers this to be part of that urban reserve special treatment area with a high potential for annexation. It is adjacent to the city boundaries on the north and east and within three hundred feet to the west across Royalty Boulevard. This results in a logical extension of the city boundaries and creates a more rational, compact city border. This shows where that location is on the county's map in that special treatment area and the policies that support it in the comprehensive plan. As such, we believe that this supports the goals, objectives, and policies in your comprehensive plan. It's compatible with the surrounding development pattern and directly supports the city's vision for southwest Pine Island Road District. It's consistent with the intent of the Urban Reserve Overlay and Urban Services Transition Area in the city. We concur with staff's assessment and are requesting approval of the proposed annexation as recommended by staff.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two? Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two. An ordinance providing for the release of the perpetual stormwater drainage easement as recorded on June 12th, 1997, in the public records of Lee County, Florida. As more particularly described herein, property located off of Diplomat Parkway East, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff. Good evening, Dawn.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, Dawn Andrews with the Property Management Division. Excuse my voice, I've been fighting a head cold this past weekend. Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two is requesting a release of a perpetual stormwater drainage easement located on a parcel at 2650 to 2700 Diplomat Parkway East, also known as Lot One VA Pine Island South subdivision. In 1997, a perpetual easement was granted to the Lee County in association with the construction of Diplomat Parkway East from northeast 24th Avenue to US 41. This easement was recently assigned over to the city with the conveyance of the Diplomat Parkway East roadway in June 2021 from the county. The current owner, DD Diplomat LLC of the property, has requested the easement be released and the city terminate its interest in said easement. The owner plans to build on the site and the easement in its current location conflicts with the construction plans. DD Diplomat is willing to reconfigure the easement to accommodate the stormwater runoff of Diplomat Parkway within the property and that will be consistent with the proposed project. The release of the easement is being coordinated with the replating of the site. I'll stand by if there's any questions. I do have an overhead that I can put on there so you can see the location on.
Okay, I'll now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two? Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd? Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance, or I'm sorry, Resolution 204 dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 204 dash twenty-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral approving the plat for VA Pine Island South Lot One replat, providing an effective date.
Good evening, Mr. Cetera.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Vince Cetero, Development Services Department. This particular item dovetails with Dawn just presented and it's actually the replat of the property. So just showing that. You get an idea of the, the actual replat here. This is the official document. It's in your backup. And this is north, so on the northeast end coming down, you can see the actual expanded drainage easement that Dawn just talked about. And here's an aerial view so you can have a better view of the property that's located in red. And this is in a northwardy direction. So the application is actually to replat the lot in order to expand the drainage easement.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 204 dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 204 dash twenty-two? Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd? Tate? Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we will move on to ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-two. An ordinance approving the sale of municipal surplus real property described as all of lots twelve through seventeen, block sixty-four hundred, all of tract G, and all of lots one through five, block sixty-four oh one, all of tract F, and all of lots one through seven, block sixty-four oh two, all of tract E, and all of lots one through four, block sixty-four oh three, all of tract D, and all of lots one through three, block sixty-four oh four, all of tract C, and all of lots one and two, block sixty-four oh five, all of tract B, and all of lots one through seven, block forty, sixty-four oh six, and all of tract A, and all of lots one through eight, block sixty-four oh seven, all as shown on the plat of Cape Coral Unit Seventy-Six, The Islands, recorded in Plat Book Thirty-Five at pages one-twenty-one through one-twenty-nine of the public records of Lee County, Florida, containing approximately forty-seven acres pursuant to Section 2-155 of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to execute a deed conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Gulf Gateway Resort and Marina LLC, property located at 106 Old Burnt Store Road North and 606 Old Burnt Store Road North, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has previously presented to City Council a detailed presentation on this particular project. That presentation is included in your backup materials and will not be provided this evening unless you want us to go through that. I just want to hit the highlights of the deal points. As you can recall, in 2001, the city pursued a request for proposal process. We began discussions with the top-ranked firm. We presented the contract, the key contract terms to City Council back in February of 2022. You authorized staff to move forward with developing the appropriate documents to consummate the transaction. So the deal points include, within thirty days after your approval of this contract, the buyer will provide a $1 million refundable deposit, which will be held in escrow. After twelve months, the deposit becomes non-refundable and will be applied towards the purchase price at the closing unless the buyer has opted during the due diligence period not to proceed with the project. After that, the city and the buyer will enter into a development agreement within twelve months of the execution of this contract. And the buyer will be responsible to secure all permits required to build the project. The official closing will occur no later than thirty-six months after City Council action tonight. And if the closing does not occur within the thirty-six months from date of council approval, the contract will terminate and the buyer will forfeit the $1 million deposit. After the closing, the buyer, which again, in this case, as far as development, will become eligible for economic incentives in the amount of $2.5 million, which would be payable. And this is, this incorporates the feedback we received from council back in February. Once the Marina portion of the project receives a certificate of occupancy, they will be eligible for a $1 million incentive payment. Once a hotel receives a certificate of occupancy, another million-dollar incentive payment. And then once they have a certificate of occupancy issued for the functional public space, they will, are eligible for $500,000. Staff recommends approval.
Hey, I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-two?
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd? Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-two. An ordinance amending the Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Land Waterway Use Restrictions, Article 2, Waterway Regulations, by creating Section 10-15.3 mooring prohibition regarding mooring prohibitions for boats in the city's waterways, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was actually championed by Councilmember Long. We presented it at a previous committee of the whole meeting. The presentation is included in your backup materials. We won't go over that same presentation this evening unless council requests that we do so. But essentially, what the council member has worked on is a, is an ordinance that essentially protects the middle third of the canal right-ofways within the city and requires the middle third to be open and navigable to boat traffic.
I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? With ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-two, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-two? Do we have a second? Is that Councilmember Long?
Yep, second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd? Tate? Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance ninety-four dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance ninety-four dash twenty-two. An ordinance amending the Cape Coral Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 12, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 1, General Provisions, Section 12-13, Alarms in its entirety regarding alarm systems in the city, providing severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this item was also previously presented at a committee of the whole workshop and we discussed the fact that the ordinance has had its, outlived its intended use. It's served the purpose that City Council desired for it to serve. And now it's come to a point where we believe it should be sunsetted. So if you approve this, we will begin the process of phasing out the program at the, to become effective at the beginning of fiscal year 24.
Okay, I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance ninety-four dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd? Tate? Welsh?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item 10B, introductions. Ordinance ninety-two dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance ninety-two dash twenty-two. An ordinance amending City of Cape Coral Ordinance 67 dash 21 as amended by Ordinance 3 dash 22, Ordinance 25 dash 22, and Ordinance 76 dash 22, which adopted the City of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues and expenditures, and capital budget for fiscal year 2022, by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of $26,529,603, providing severability and effective date. The public hearing will be November 16th, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Hayden, report.
Thanks, Mayor. Attended the first-ever trunk-or-treat event last Friday at City Hall and it certainly was a treat. I don't know that any other city hall or city staff in the state put together what we did last Friday and we did it weeks after a Cat Four, almost Cat Five hurricane. What staff delivered from an idea was nothing short of amazing. I think when the evening started... I think when the evening started, we thought we might get a few hundred people there. We got a few thousand people at this event. And I think that showed really two things. I think the community needed a place to heal and come together, to see smiling faces and happy children. And this day, this day provided that because we certainly saw that, you know, the whole way through. And it gave staff, I think, a chance to come together. Trucks and cars that were decorated, treats that were passed out, how everybody was enthused to be there. And for a lot of the families and children, this is probably going to be their only Halloween because neighborhoods, some of them weren't necessarily safe because of all the debris. And this brought people together. So thank you to staff, Melissa, for the idea and putting everything together, yeah. And City Manager, quite the costume. I won't say anything more than that. It's interesting. But well done by staff. And then, this is a personal one to a council member sitting three places down to my left. This is her last full voting meeting for Ms. Gloria Tate. What she has been able to accomplish in her lifetime, I list her as one of the top five most influential people in the history of Cape Coral. Well, that's okay. You can go ahead and cry for two whole weeks if you want to. But did a little research today, and turns out when she ends her term, she will be the second longest-serving council person in the history of Cape Coral, second only to Tony Rotino. And during that time, the only thing she ever put first was other people. She dedicated her life to helping other people and making this community, which has been her home since the 60s, her life. And I was able to, she's been a friend for 20 years. She married my wife and I. But her dedication to community is unprecedented. And I was happy she was able to join us for this last year or so and be a part of this group, make us better, as she has done her entire life, make this community better. And I have no doubt she will be in our ears for many years to come. But Gloria, when you get a chance to look back on everything you've done, everything you'll do in the future, you know, always remember this city would not be where it is today without what you did. And you were a true trailblazer, and I am happy to call you a friend. Thank you.
That's a tough one to talk. Don't call my name. I'll reserve my comments for the amazing Gloria Tate for her final meeting, but I echo that sentiment. So we'll make her cry then. Thanks so much. No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson.
I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Cosn and our staff, and those of us that were there that evening volunteering and working at trunk-or-treat. It was truly a treat. Gotten so much positive feedback from so many people, and I think the only thing is we probably need to buy more candy next year. But I too will reserve my comments for next week for my dearest Gloria. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, the trunk-or-treat was awesome that we had here at City Hall. A big success. But I would also like to say that, you know, everybody wonders why everybody moves to Cape Coral from all over the country. I think our city is the poster city of love and kindness. I mean, when you look around the city, what took place here after this storm, and not only did the city have that trunk-or-treat event, but many other organizations throughout the city followed suit and did the same thing. And, you know, there's too many to thank, but we all know who they are, from large supermarket chains to churches to all different organizations, all stepped up to the plate, as well as the kindness of helping their neighbors clean up, helping local businesses clean up. Just, it's a great place to live, and I'm proud to be a resident here. And I can tell you, it's one of the reasons why everybody's flocking here. When we see what goes on in other cities in the country, I can't even comprehend it because here it's a totally different ballgame. I'm proud to live here. And once again, I just want to thank everybody for just doing what everybody in our city does, and it's help others and just promote all these great events to help each other out. Thank you to everyone.
Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. I wanted to thank our City Manager for taking the initiative to do the trunk-or-treat. I know it was a community effort. I know it was a staff effort, and it was exactly what community needed. And I have to say Connie Briglin, our downstairs girl, she rocked it. She really did. And everything that she did and the costume that she wore and how hard she worked, I just totally appreciated that. I wanted to let City Manager know that I'll be attending the TDC meeting on the 10th. And I'm sure with all that we have going on with our beach and everything, that maybe you'll want to get with me or staff and prepare in case there's something I need to share at TDC concerning the beach erosion, et cetera. I also went to P&amp;Z today for Councilmember Shepherd, and they asked about the 50/50 rule, and I reminded them that the town hall is tomorrow night and live. And I wanted to thank, again, City Manager and staff for the Alert Lee updates. That is really the best way to get to everybody, I think, because I think 90% of America has a cellphone. And so tonight, we got the town hall meeting, Alert Lee, and they called and they texted. So that was really, really helpful. And thank you for all the kind words, Councilmember Hayden, and I look forward to saying goodbye on the 16th.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report, but I do want to promote two events that are going on this Saturday. One of them is a golf tournament for the Guardian Angels Foundation, which supports our special populations. I don't know if there's still any room left. I know it's a pretty popular golf tournament, but I will be playing in that. Hopefully, I can represent myself well, but I don't think it's going to happen. But aside from that, what I'm going to miss, which is always a great event that happens every year, is this weekend, we have our open house at all the fire stations from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I remember taking my nephew there two years ago, and he loved being able to climb around and see where the fire and what happens and meet all the firefighters. And it's a great event. If you've never been into a firehouse, you don't have to bring your kids. You can show up on your own, learn what they do, see what your tax dollars are being spent on because there are amazing facilities that we've been putting up in the community, and I wish everyone had the time to go out and visit it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just a few things I wanted to mention as well. First off, the turnout for the trunk-or-treat. I just wanted to thank staff for everything that they did. It was an exceptional event, and you saw a lot of hard work that was put into that that made it successful. So I just wanted to thank all the staff that participated in that. Also, I wanted to mention our Oasis Charter Schools was named the 2022 Circle of Excellence Award, which is awarded by the Florida Cognia Advisory Committee. They were presented this award and recognized at a ceremony on Tuesday, December 6. So it's just another award that shows how great our charter schools are. And apparently, they are, this award is presented in each state to just one educational organization. So it could have been given to any school within the state of Florida, and our school, Oasis Charter Schools, received that award. So just accolades to everyone over at the charter school for exceptional work that they do. Also, 10/28, I attended the Sprouts' grand opening. I can honestly say, I think it was myself, Councilmember Hayden, the City Manager, and Councilmember Nelson. First time I've been to a ribbon cutting at 6:45 in the morning, but we got it done, and it was great to see another business open up in our community. Also, attended the CRA meeting yesterday, and also I was a guest speaker earlier today over in Fort Myers. It was a tape show for, just to advise the community of the, some of the responses and some of the issues we had with Hurricane Ian. So that was good to get that positive message out there as well. Also, I wanted to ask council's approval. We need to add a special meeting for Wednesday, November 30 at 4:30 p.m. regarding ordinance 96-22. It has to deal with the proposed floodplain property value ordinance amending the LDC. In essence, it's the FEMA 50% rule, the cumulative value that we can control here at the city. So we need to add that onto the meeting for November 30 at 4:30. So we will need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
And it's usually Madam City Attorney, but it's Mr. Assistant City Attorney tonight. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick things. On Monday, November 14, 2022, and Tuesday, November 15, beginning at 9:00 a.m., your charter officers are hosting an elected officials orientation. The purpose of this event is to provide an overview of operations to those individuals that are elected to office at the November 8, 22 general election. It serves as an introduction for newly-elected individuals, but also a refresher for existing members of City Council and those that are reelected. And so all of you are invited to attend. This could take up to two full days, learning about city government. The orientation events will be held in the conference room A200, which is otherwise known as the Green Room at the Nicholas Annex, which is located at 815 Nicholas Parkway here in Cape Coral. The event is open to the public. I too want to thank our staff and to all the members of City Council that participated in the first-ever trunk-or-treat. It was an incredible success. And for those members that were not able to attend, or for those of you that are watching at home and weren't able to attend, here's a really quick video of how successful the event was. While the video is playing, I could tell you this is not a shot break. This is not a foul. I think we'll do that next year, but I would have to say that if we started that tradition this year, the winner would be the Office of Capitol Improvements. They did a fantastic job with the skeleton and, I guess, cemetery scene in the back of an SUV. That was really outstanding. So thank you again, staff. Thank you, council, and thank you to all our neighbors who attended, and to all the sponsors of the event that donated candy and costumes that we gave away. There were well over 400 costumes that were given away, I think, the day before the event. So it was a lot of fun, and I think we needed it just as much as the community needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, time and place of future meetings. We have a special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, November 16, 2022, beginning at 3:00 p.m. in Conference Room 228. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, November 16, 2022, beginning at 4:30 p.m. here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.